Township Planning Board is now in session.
Notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied by the placing of a notice at this meeting bulletin board at the municipal building filing the notice with township clerk. And transmitting the notice to Hunter County Democrat, the courier news and Star Letter and Trent times further more notice and advertisement by the app can has been reviewed and it's proper the board is jurisdiction on which this matters.
Very good. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Chairman, Mr. Edward Gettings.
Here.
Vice Chairwoman, Ms. Donna Drews.
Here.
Mayor, Ms. Robin Fatu.
Here.
Mr. Scott McDade. Ms. Judy D. John Domenico.
Here.
Ms. Michelle Cafacuri, she is asked to be excused. Mr. Dennis Concanon.
Here.
Mr. James Miller.
Here.
Mr. Glenn Sokolowski.
Here.
Board professionals, Board Attorney, Mr. John Bellardo.
Here.
Township Planner, Mr. Jeffrey Baccarella.
Here.
Township Engineer, Mr. Paul Ferrero.
Here.
Township Landscape Architect, Mr. John Morgan Thomas.
Here.
Board Traffic Consultant, Mr. Jay Troutman.
Here.
And on behalf of Board Planner, Ms. Jessica Caldwell, we have Ms. Allison Kopsko.
Here.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to invite everyone to please stand for the pledge of allegiance, a moment of silence to remember the men and women who have served us in the armed forces.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, first up this evening, we have the minutes from our September 13th meeting that were circulated prior to our meeting this evening. Does anyone have any comments? Or questions on the September 13th minutes? There being none, can I have a motion to approve, please?
Action.
Chairman, Mr. Edward Gettings.
Yes.
Vice Chairwoman, Ms. Donna Drews.
Yes.
Mayor, Ms. Robin Fatu.
Yes.
Mr. Scott McDade.
Yes.
Ms. Judy D. John Domenico.
Yes.
Mr. Dennis Concanon.
Yes.
And Mr. James Miller.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next up are the minutes from our November 8th meeting, which were also distributed prior to our meeting this evening. I have a comment to lead things off on the item number nine, public hearings. Where it says, second paragraph from the bottom, Mr. Ford provided extreme details. I don't know that he provided anything extreme, but he did provide sufficient details.
What page is that?
Page three, second paragraph up from the bottom. I just said, oh, that caught me as extreme. So I'd like to strike that and make it sufficient, please.
You got it.
Anyone else have any comments or questions on the minutes? Again, we're talking about November 8th? You got it, Taylor?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
So moved as amended? Chairman, Mr. Edward Gettings.
Yes.
Vice Chairwoman, Ms. Donna Drews.
Yes.
Mayor, Ms. Robin Fatu.
Yeah.
Mr. Scott McDade.
Yes.
Ms. Judy D. John Domenico.
Yes.
Mr. Dennis Concanon.
Yes.
Mr. James Miller.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next up is citizens' privilege. If we have anyone here in the room this evening or online, and Taylor, do we have anyone?
No, there are no members of the public.
Okay, thank you. If anybody has an item that they would like to address to the board this evening, other than the items further down on our agenda, now would be the time to do so. Okay, noted that there are none. So we will move on to resolutions. We have resolution 12 dash 2023 Flemington Junction Associates. This is 20 and 22 Mini Coney Road, block 1601 lots three and four. And those, uh, that, excuse me, resolution was circulated to all of us beforehand. Does anyone have any comments or suggestions or questions on the resolution? But it was very thorough, so.
Yeah.
So I'll move to approve. There being none.
Second. That was you, Donna?
Yes.
Chairman, Mr. Edward Gettings.
Yes.
Vice Chairwoman, Ms. Donna Drews.
Yes.
Mayor, Ms. Robin Fatu.
Yes.
Mr. Scott McDade.
Yes.
Ms. Judy D. John Domenico.
Yes.
And Mr. Dennis Concanon.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next up with the public hearings, as noted in the agenda, Flemington Concrete Products LLC was supposed to be this evening. That's going to be carried. So now we have Diamond Nation's properties.
If anyone is here for Flemington Concrete Products, when they do get a new date, they will have to notice and advertise.
You are correct. Thank you. Okay, so we have Diamond Nation Properties LLC. This is preliminary and final site plan for the construction of a 126,672 square foot self-storage warehouse.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Stephen Gruenberg. I'm an attorney in Flemington, New Jersey, and I am here on behalf of Diamond Nation LLC to present our application for preliminary and final site plan approval with some C variances relief as well. Prior to the hearing, we provided Mr. Bellardo and the Board Secretary with our affidavit of proof of service and publication of the notice of hearing, and I ask that jurisdiction be confirmed.
Yes, as noted earlier, Mr. Gruenberg, I have reviewed that and jurisdiction is proper, given the notice and advertisement were proper.
Thank you. And we do have a court reporter this evening who will be transcribing as requested. This is our application and the applicant is the owner of block 16.03 lot one, which is in the I-2 industrial district. And it's at the corner of River Road, County Route 523 and Bartles Corner Road, County Route 12. The lot contains just under five acres and five acres is the minimum lot area required. And that was as a result of a, it was made non-conforming when Hunter County realigned the roadway River Road in 2007, which created a new lot, making our lot slightly non-conforming. We had previously received approval for 183 overflow parking spaces on the lot to be used by Diamond Nation. And that was actually before the Board of Adjustment for use variance relief at that time. Now, what our proposal is to have a self-storage facility as well as the overflow parking for the Diamond Nation, which is a conforming use, both for the self-storage and for the overflow parking under shared parking analysis. And your ordinance specifically allows that. We have a number of C variances that are required, but we're seeking preliminary and final site plan this evening. And I have a number of witnesses that will go over those actual C variances and design waivers. And I can have them sworn in all at once, or we can do them one at a time, whatever you prefer.
Why don't we do them one at a time? Our professionals remain under oath, having been previously sworn.
Great. Then I will ask Mr. McKenna to come forward from Boulder Engineering.
Sirfield, state your name, raise your right hand.
Kyle McKenna.
Swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in connection with your testimony tonight by otherwise affirming or so help you God.
I do.
You're sworn.
Thank you. Mr. McKenna, will you please provide the board with the benefit of your qualifications?
Sure. So again, my name is Kyle McKenna. I'm representing Boulder Engineering. Address is 30 Independence Boulevard, Warren, New Jersey, 07059. I have a bachelor's of science degree from Rutgers University in Civil Engineering. My license is professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. License is current and good standing. I've provided professional testimony in front of multiple planning and zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey, including Raritan Township.
Okay, thank you. You're accepted.
Just a side note, you can take that mic out and if you don't mind just speaking directly into it. And for all witnesses that will be testifying, just so it's nice and clear for the recording and for the stenographer.
Thank you.
So Kyle, why don't you take the board through our proposed site plan? And if you have an exhibit, why don't we mark them now?
If I'm going to describe the exhibits.
Mark it to evidence, but if you could please identify it because it's a colored rendering of something that had previously been submitted.
So this, this exhibit is actually just an aerial exhibit. I'm going to utilize it for describing the existing conditions of the site. It's dated September 18th, 2023, and I'll mark it.
A1.
Please orient the board to the site and Mr. Brownings.
And so for everyone's reference, north is to the top of the page. The site in question is delineated in the dash yellow line. I'm just going to use this exhibit to overrun through the existing site conditions surrounding uses before moving on to the proposed conditions. The site is bordered to the north by Bartles Corner Road, and then it turns into. Sure, yeah. So the site is bordered to the north by Bartles Corner Road. It's bordered to the west and south by River Road, also known as Route 523. The site is bordered to the east by the previous River Road alignment. For purposes of this presentation, I'm just going to refer to that as Old River Road just to avoid confusion because it does play a role in the, the site function and operation. The site's just under five acres in area. The topography of this site, I'd like to note, it does drop from the northwest corner to the southeast corner on a relatively gentle slope, approximately nine feet across the site. There's also an embankment, a man-made embankment along the northern edge of the property up to Bartles Corner Road, wrapping around that northeast corner to Old River Road as well. So there's approximately at the most an eight-foot differential in grade from Bartles Corner down to the site. The existing use and operation of the site, so as it was previously noted, operates as an overflow parking facility for the Diamond Nation use, which is across to the south and west. The 183 unpaved parking spaces were approved previously back in 2012 by the township. Access to the overflow parking area by vehicle is provided near the southeast corner of the site where Old River Road connects to River Road, approximately 250 feet north of that intersection there is the access to this overflow parking area. Pedestrian access from the overflow parking area to Diamond Nation is provided near the northwest corner of the property. There's a existing gravel sidewalk that connects the parking lot to the signalized intersection and crosswalk at the corner of Bartles Corner and River Road. From there, folks can access the Diamond Nation facility, be in an onsite sidewalk on that property down to the, the main structure to the south. I would also like to note there's an existing chain link fence along River Road frontage to help guide and direct pedestrians to that signalized intersection rather than just crossing.
It would be helpful if you would actually point.
Sure.
What you're talking about as you go through your testimony.
Yeah, absolutely. So there's along the frontage, there's a chain link fence to help direct pedestrians to this northwest corner where they can cross over to the Diamond Nation facility. Unless there's any questions on the existing conditions, I was going to go ahead and move on to the proposed and run through the proposed development.
And again, why don't you identify this and we'll have that marked exhibit A2. You can't hear me?
No.
Wow, and I'm a loud mouth.
I don't, I think it's because you're not speaking into the mic.
Yeah.
Why don't you please identify this and mark it as exhibit A2?
Okay, so this exhibit is a colorized version of the site plan sheet, C30, one that was submitted with the application. It's essentially identical to that sheet. It's just been colorized. And then in the areas around the site, there's been an aerial imposed to help just provide a good frame of reference. Again, orientation north is to the top of the page.
If you don't mind, I have hard copies if the board members would like to have their own of that rendering that's colorized.
Sure.
And we also provided digital copies and that's on the big screen there.
While those are being handed out, just as a, to describe what I'm going to be running through from my outline, we're going to be describing the proposed conditions. I'll start with the building and the structure. We do have an architect here that's going to go into further detail on the actual structures that are being proposed. From there, I'll touch on access to the building, parking, access to the site, and then I'll get into utilities, stormwater, landscaping, and lighting. Okay, so this, I'm going to break the site down into two different components. So under proposed conditions, on the northern half of the site, it's going to be a very similar use to what's out there today. 183 space overflow parking area for the existing Diamond Nation facility. On the southern half of the site would be a proposed self-storage facility. That is shown in this tan rectangle right in the middle of the sheet. This would be a three-story self-storage facility, just under 127,000 square feet total gross floor area. Access to the building for customers would be in the center on the, is going to be provided in two locations. So the center of the building on the western side of the building and on the eastern side. On the western side, there's two different loading areas that are actually interior to the building. So customers would be able to back their car in to load or unload and access their storage facility. So if they were, had a storage facility on an upper floor, they'd be able to access the elevator. If it was on a ground floor, they'd be able to get access to their storage unit utilizing that loading area on the west side, fronting River Road. Or in the rear, but it's really functioning as rear or the east side at the center of the building as well. There's also going to be an office near the northwest corner of the building. So this is really just to provide some supplies, moving supplies, cardboard boxes, tapes, things like that. If you need to fill out any paperwork as part of renting your storage, uh, facility, that's where you would, would do that. There would be 17 spaces proposed, parking spaces proposed for the self-storage facility itself. Those would be located with 13 of those spaces along the River Road fronting side of the building or the west with four spaces located in front of the building on the east side of the, of the building. Vehicular access to the property is going to be very similar to what's out there today. You would access Old River Road south of the subject property, similar to today. And you would traverse up River Road in northbound direction and then access the site near that southeast corner. Very similar location to today. It's roughly 100 feet to the south.
So only if you're on parking spaces, can you clarify something for me?
Sure.
You've mentioned that number, it's on 183, and that I see that number referred to going back. In 2012, the Board of Adjustment approved the use of this property for this, but they made a note. It said, add a note to the plan and revise the plan to add banked parking area to accommodate approximately 50 more vehicles than the current proposed 183. So is your proposal to eliminate that? Did that just go away? We want to understand what happened to that 50 bank spots.
So the, the proposal would not provide 50 additional spaces. It's my understanding that the 183 were, were utilized under current operation and that would be maintained as part of this proposal. So 183 parking spaces maintained for the Diamond Nation overflow parking and then 17 spaces proposed for the self-storage facility.
Okay.
So you're basically just ignoring what the Board of Adjustment said to bank 50 spaces?
We're, we're not ignoring it. This is a new application based upon a new proposal for the site, which provides for the 183 parking spaces that were previously granted by the Board of Adjustment. But the 50 has not been required to be imposed and constructed. And right now we only have the 183 parking spaces there. We're proposing to have the self-storage facility with 17 additional parking spaces.
Do we have jurisdiction to waive a zoning board of adjustment condition of approval, or do you have to go back there to get relief from that?
I don't think, yeah, I think you have jurisdiction to entertain a new application where the, the uses are permitted uses in the, in the zone. And it's not a change from what was, this is a new application to have overflow parking continued under this proposal with a shared parking analysis with the, the self-storage. So it's not something that has to go back before the Board of Adjustment.
I'm not sure of that, but I think the board certainly can take into consideration that a previous resolution that required 50 bank spaces is, is no longer going to be out here till, so I would give the board that direction.
Okay, before I get too far away from the building and the proposed self-storage use, I did want to identify that we are, we are requesting a front yard setback variance for the building. So this is a fairly unique lot because of the River Road realignment that occurred several years ago. The way the ordinance defines this, this lot, it actually has front yards all the way around it because it runs.
Ask you to point to the front yard because I don't know where it is.
They're all the front yards. So the way, the way the ordinance defines it is that they're all hundred, they're all 100-foot setback front yard requirement around the site in its entirety.
Even along the railroad?
Correct, because technically it's not along the railroad. It's along the, the old River Road, which is, which is still county right-of-way.
But that wasn't, that road vacated when they, the right-of-way is there, but the road use was vacated, correct?
The, it's no longer serves as River Road, but it's still a county right-of-way. And based on the feedback we had received, based on our interpretation and the interpretation we received from the township, that would still be considered a front yard. It is fairly unique, though. So we are requesting a setback variant. So there's 100-foot setback for front yards in this zone. We're requesting 50 feet, which does occur along that eastern side of the site where River Road runs parallel to the railroad, along Old River Road, sorry. Along the River Road frontage, the maximum or the minimum setback is just under 80 feet, so 79, 79.5 feet. The, the variance request is 50 feet because again, the Old River Road frontage is considered a front yard. We, I would like to note that we are compliant with respect to the building height as well. Building height is 37.33 feet proposed, 60 feet is permitted, so we're well within the requirements for building height.
I'm going to pause. Could you clarify what's the setbacks, the existing building setback from the right-of-way along the entrance where there is parking for the building? How far is the building back at that point? From the right-of-way?
Where there's parking for the building along River Road, right in this area. So the minimum setback is 79.5 feet, which occurs right at that southwestern corner. Or on your, on the render, you can see it says stairs. So right in that area, that's 79.5 feet. That dash line, if you follow it up, it actually says 100-foot front yard setback. That's the setback line. So that's, that's the 100-foot setback. And that's again, it's very, very unique due to the shape of the site and having multiple front yards. Again, before I go too far away from the proposed self-storage use and the parking, we are also requesting a variance for the number of parking spaces for the self-storage use itself. As I noted, we are proposing 17 parking spaces. Based on the ordinance, which is one per 2,000 square feet for this sort of use, we would be required to have 64 parking spaces for that use. We feel this is appropriate, number of parking spaces for the use. In the, in the review letter from the Board's Traffic Engineer, he also agreed and record and found that the typical number of parking spaces is about 10 to 19 uses, or sorry, 10 to 19 spaces for a self-storage facility of this size. So we fall right within that, that average number of parking spaces. So again, we feel it's an appropriate parking use, consider, considering the use. I'd also like to note that we do meet the ADA requirements for parking spaces. We're proposing 17 spaces. We're proposing one of those to be ADA compliant. It's a van-accessible space proposed right near the front entrance to the office. The ADA spaces for the overflow parking are provided on the Diamond Nation facility so that they're not, we don't need to provide ADA for the Diamond Nation facility itself. We're also meeting the requirement for the electrical vehicle make-ready spaces. So we're proposing a total of eight make-ready spaces. Those are located just to the, the north of the northern portion of the building here. One of which would be an accessible space. So that's seven spaces for the overflow parking area of 183, which is 4% of the total parking spaces. And then one space for the self-storage facility, self-total of eight spaces proposed. I would also like to note that on the northern and southern sides of the building, there are drive-up storage units. Those drive aisles are an extra 5D wide, 30-foot wide drive aisles in those areas of the site to accommodate drive-up unit access. So what that is, is basically very similar to a small garage, roll-up door, small sink, like one-car garage type unit. So folks can drive right up to their unit, roll up the door and access, go right in and out as needed. And again, they're oversized drive aisles for short-term turnaround loading and loading. We're also requesting a variance for the maximum impervious cover on the site. This was recently changed from 55% to 40% for this particular zone. We're requesting a variance of 63.3% of impervious cover. We've done, again, we, we are trying to limit the number of, or be reasonable with the number of spaces for the, for the proposed self-storage use to minimize unnecessary impervious cover. We're also proposing 27,000 square feet approximately of porous pavement to help meet the green infrastructure requirements for stormwater design. So that is included as actual hard surface, although it does meet and provide a lot of the same benefits that a porous surface would provide. So that's just something to take into consideration as well with that particular requirement.
What is the green infrastructure? Can you explain that a little bit more?
Sure. So the DEP in, in 2021 changed their, the regulations to require that stormwater quantity and quality control. So basically cleaning the stormwater and also helping to mitigate peak runoff from sites, which mitigates just the detrimental impacts of flooding and everything throughout the state. They changed the requirements to require that you utilize a green infrastructure, BMP or basin to treat and address water quantity for stormwater. So on this particular site, we're utilizing permeable pavement or porous pavement throughout the site. And then we're also utilizing bio retention basins near the southern side of the site to address mitigation, stormwater mitigation for quantities and also water quality as well. And I did review the engineering comments provided by your board engineer, agreed to work through and address any of those comments. A lot of them are technical in nature, but I think we can work through and resolve all those comments that he identified as other.
Well, I think there's comments in there that have to be testified to.
Yeah, absolutely. Before you get there, I'd like to clarify. So at this point, the zone change requires an impervious coverage limit maximum of what?
40%.
And you're coming in at what?
63.3.
Did you make any attempt after the change in the zoning ordinance to reduce your impervious coverage on the site by reducing the scale of your building?
I know the, the ordinance and. Uh, no, the, the ordinance, from what I understand, was adopted very recently, so. We, we haven't made any significant changes to the plans.
How many months ago? Yeah, two or three months ago.
Yeah, this, this application was filed before.
August.
The application was deemed complete prior to the adoption of that ordinance, so it would stay with the ordinance current at that time of the completeness.
Yeah, the ordinance was asked.
After.
No, prior to completes.
When was the application?
Wait, wait, hold on. The ordinance was adopted prior to completeness, the ordinance governs, the ordinance was adopted a- after. The ordinance doesn't, was the ordinance adopted prior to you deeming this complete?
Yes.
Okay, so that ordinance governs.
Yes, so they, they are subject to forty percent.
Yes, and we concede that the ordinance applies, but to answer your question as to the efforts of it made, we actually had filed the application. Well before the ordinance had actually been adopted and before we were aware of it. And were deemed complete very shortly after the ordinance was adopted.
You still live with it?
We, we.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
You asked what?
Yeah, and it, it's just, it, given the township's concern about stormwater management and impervious coverage, which was the whole rationale. And given that you knew the ordinance was changed. We'll hear your testimony, but. So your zoning ta- your schedule and tables in the plat- plans were never changed then to the new. Standards.
We've updated.
Still shows the sixty-six point five.
We did, uh, in November, we refiled the copy of the site plan that shows the, in this. The exhibit in front of you this evening does say forty percent.
Okay.
And we noticed for the variance at forty percent.
This brief interjection, the, the zoning board of adjustment attorney, Mr. Drill, whose name appears on this book. Has opined that you need to go back to his board to get relief from the fifty-five. Bank parking space requirement, so that's something. As we proceed, we'll have to work out. Because I don't think you could just come in here and say, we're ignoring the zoning board of adjustment condition of approval.
We'll, I'll, we'll have to work that out because I had had a conference with Mr. Drill, which I thought that had been resolved, where we had resolved that this was the appropriate. Jurisdiction of whether we have to deal with the.
I wish when, I, I know there were a lot of conferences going on on this application, including on whether. It should be before the zoning board or the planning board, I just wish in the future, future you would include me, so we don't have. Miscommunication when you appear before us at this, at this meeting.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it was, wasn't my choice as to who to invite to the meeting, I was put on a phone call with two people, so.
No, I, I get it.
I am very happy to work with you.
I'm in the loop, because now all of a sudden I'm hearing about fifty-five bank parking spaces that were in a zoning board of adjustment.
And I'm hearing for, right now, there wasn't in any of the reports or anything either, so we're both dealing with.
You know, it is what it is in your prior resolution, which I assume you review before you come here. To make sure that, you know, you're compliant, so that, that's an issue that we'll, that we'll, we'll deal with should the application get approved. It may very well be a condition of approval if we get to that point, that you go back to the zoning board and get relief.
Understood that that's what we're talking about, I just can't commit, we gotta look into the issue.
Okay, just to finish off on operations for the self-storage facility, I'd also like to just address refuse removal, so. We have designed the site circulation to accommodate your typical trash truck. In this particular case, there's no external dumpster proposed, refuse to be pretty limited to. Being produced by the small office area, you know, maybe some paper, very, very small generator of, of trash, so. There is proposed chat, trash rooms within the interior of the building to handle that small amount of trash generated by the office use. No, no external dumpster proposed, so basically a trash truck would pull up, the. Containers would be rolled out and then rolled back in, so off, off-hours, limited interruption to, to the, the operation of the facility. Also, designed the site circulation to accommodate emergency vehicle access and. Small moving vehicles up to your typical box truck that you might rent from a U-Haul or something like that, up to thirty feet, which is. Larger than we would anticipate, we visited the site, but we did want to make sure we're accommodating box trucks and emergency vehicles.
So now that you're talking about trucks, one of the things that I, I have a question on is, these facilities. Frequently, maybe that's the right word, allow for storage outside of boats and RVs and maybe trucks. I don't see any place to put those here, so.
Agree, we're, we're agreeing that there will be no outside storage of any trucks, vehicles, materials, anything like that, there's no outdoor renting. And, and to answer the other question, there was a, a question regarding. The renting of vehicles, there will be no renting of vehicles, we understand that would be a separate. Use and that would require different relief, and so we would agree to both of those as conditions.
No U-Haul business or accessory?
Correct. Accessory use, I don't know what.
Accessory use of a truck rental.
Correct.
Okay, and then again, just to. The, going back to the office, so the office hours would be pretty typical office hours, nine, likely nine to six during the week. On the weekend, slightly reduced hours, eight to five on Saturday, eleven to three on Sunday is what we would typically expect. There would be off, off, beyond the office hours, customers would have access to their. Their storage units via key card access, so that would likely be a six AM to ten PM type of hours of operations as far as accessing. The units, again, all, it's all internal, it's all key card access for, for, for security. Yeah, we're. The architect can describe that further, but.
We'll have a testimony on that.
Yes.
Well, to clarify it, I, I don't want to speak out of turn.
So access, access to the overflow parking area would be very similar to the, the self-storage, so they utilize the same access point. Just to the south of the site. Traverse north, enter the site in the same location as self-storage facility, and then travel beyond to access the overflow parking area. Your board engineer did request that we provide directional signage to the folks utilizing the overflow parking area to help guide them to the spaces, and we would agree to do that. To help clarify. How to get to that area. There would be no fences preventing vehicles from accessing different areas of the site, because again, all the storages contained internal to the building.
How would you clar- uh, characterize the condition of Old River Road up into this? Until you access the property, is it, has it been regularly maintained and paved and taken care of by the county?
So back when it was realigned, they basically removed half width of it, so we are proposing as part of this development. To repave the. Maybe like the western half of it and restore to a twenty-five-foot-wide roadway, which is in conformance with. Township criteria for an access drive, so we would be making some improvements to the Old River Road access from the site entrance. To River Road, we've all, we have applied to the county, and we've received conditional approval, we have some conditions that we have to address in that approval, but. They have reviewed this and didn't have any, take any issue with that particular aspect of things.
Are they requiring additional stormwater management?
There were, the only comment related or condition related to stormwater management was to enter an agreement for maintenance, because we are proposing to. Connect to their infrastructure with, just adjacent to the River Road right-of-way.
In and out. If the screws southern part.
It is, so the. The area further north, just because of the bend in the road, it's really not a, a good location for a driveway, there's actually a sightline easement that we're respecting as part of our design. That's this hatched, cross-hatched area here, right around the bend, so. The access would be limited, there is emergency vehicle access out there today, I know there was a comment that came up, I think in the fire officials' letter, we'd be. Going to work with them on that and still maintain that, but as far as for the general public, it would be limited to that southern access point.
Is there anything that would prevent? The Dime of the Nation baseball patron from using the spaces that are intended to be for the storage units?
So the spaces would be signed to try to mitigate that, I don't think there's. It, it would be just like any other use, if you have a sign restricted, part, shared parking situation.
First ignored.
It, I, I don't think they're gonna have. You know, security on-site handling that, but if it becomes an issue, I'm sure that, you know, additional signing or signage or, you know, towing signs or something like that could be, could be provided, but. Again, it's, it's, it's a similar situation to what they have today as far as parking availability, and they're operating quite well under those existing conditions.
But many customers for self-storage may access on a weekend when many of the events that require the oversight parking is utilized, so. I would do whatever you can to ensure that a patron to the self-storage has ready access to parking. And that that's mitigated to the extent possible, because I can imagine they would not have any parking available if they were an event at that time, because it is so popular over at the fields.
As far as pedestrian access to the Dime Nation facility from the overflow parking, again, very similar to the existing conditions today, we are improving it a bit. So that access point near the northwest corner of the site would be, would continue to be utilized, we are proposing to. Put a concrete sidewalk rather than just like a gravel path or sidewalk that's out there today, so it would be improved a bit slightly. But generally function very much the same sidewalk to the signalized intersection to utilize the crosswalk. We are proposing three different building-mounted signs, one on the, each frontage for Bartles Corner Road. And then River Road, and then the frontage on the other south side of River Road. Each sign is approximately a hundred and ninety-four, or it's not approximately, but a hundred and ninety-four square feet in area. For a total of five hundred and eighty-two square feet of building-mounted signage. That is. A variance that we are requesting, there is only one building-mounted sign permitted in this zone. Of a hundred square feet, again, just given the unique nature of the site and location. We do think it's appropriate just. To have a, a sign on each, on each side of the building that faces a road. We're not proposing any building-mounted signage as part of this application, in the initial application, we were proposing a freestanding sign, but that's since been removed.
And just to correct, you, you said building-mounted, we're talking ground-mounted, correct?
We're, we're not proposing any ground-mounted sign. The, only the three building-mounted signs, to clarify.
Except, exception of sign, directional signage?
With the exception of directional signage, correct, yeah, which was, which was requested, and so we would agree to provide that.
So the three, you're requesting three building-mounted sign, each which are almost double what's permitted, correct? A hundred square foot is permitted.
Whereas a hundred are permitted, correct, and we do have some. Exhibits that the architect can present to and provide for the detail on what the signs will look like and where they'll be located on the building, I'm just identifying them spatially for you for reference.
I, I get the three different signs, but any rationale for having them twice the size, this year remarks?
Yeah, I think we'll have a different witness present that testimony as to rationale for the, the size of the signs.
So I'm sorry to bring you back to parking again, but, you know, I, I think it's great. When I go by and I see this field filled today, I think it's wonderful, bringing a lot of people into the community, but what I see is. I, I frequently see RVs parked in there, and I guess, you know, some parents, they might all get together and that, that's great, where are they gonna park here? Because they're all auto parking spots, right, they're not RV parking spots, I don't know if you gave that any thought, because it's not unusual to see RVs parked.
We, we're not proposing, uh, we're not proposing specific spaces for RVs, so that's something that would need to be addressed, we're not proposing, they're all passenger vehicle. Spaces, nine by eighteen.
So then would they be precluded?
From, from parking in those areas? We probably, I think we need to circle back on what the methodology would be to prevent that, but that's, it's not anticipated that we'd have RV parking in the overflow area.
It's not an unusual thing when I drive. Some, something we'll have to talk about, okay. Also, can you help me understand and the board understand the pervious pavement? And given the variance that you're looking for, which is pretty significant, right, on the pervious, impervious coverage? What is that substance, and, I mean, today. Right, the cars park on the grass and there's, I don't know what it is, I don't know if it's cinders or gravel or whatever that the cars come in on, which makes perfect sense. Here, I'm assuming all these lanes are asphalt. Was there any thought given to the impervious coverage, like the impervious material also being used there, or is it just not the type of use that you could?
Yeah, so.
For that, that sort of problem.
So if you look at the exhibit E two, the permeable pavement that we're proposing is a different color, it's a lighter gray, and it is. Generally contained to the parking areas, as you noted, not the drive aisles. So a couple of, of things to point out on that, number one, we do find that it is more durable and, or has higher durability and longevity, if it's. Utilizing the parking stalls rather than the drive aisles, it just takes a little bit less. Abuse and it tends to last longer and. It's just a better, a better use, you'll see that pretty often, if you, if you ever see it, it's almost, it's almost. Certainly gonna be in that, in that kind of configuration, so that's pretty typical for what we're proposing, we also have to be very strategic about where we locate it, because the DEP regulations do specify. This very specific ratios of areas that can flow to those porous pavement areas and the, like, so we're limited. Ratio-wise and how far that stormwater has to run across those areas, so there's a lot of thought that goes into locating these things. These por- porous paving sys- porous paving systems, a lot of strategic thought that goes into where we locate them, but that's. That's generally why, how we ended up with this configuration, and what it is, is. It's a porous material, the DEP requires it's approximately six inches per hour. To, for infiltration rate, so it's really high porosity, below it is stone, a stone storage bed, so it's not just like gravel. It's more permeable than just a typical gravel, it's compacted, and then underneath it is also a stone storage bed, so it actually. Holds water and detains it to help that mitigate the, the quantity reduction that we're required to meet.
So you're just, you're not doing storage beneath the, the permeable pavement, you're just doing permeable pavement as the storage meeting?
There is storage beneath it, so it's, it's a stone storage bed, so it's a stone that has a high buoy ratio to help store some water, basically.
Thank you, friends, for my question, I, I was trying to help you on the forty percent. And, you know, the, the traffic in there, you gentlemen can tell me if I'm wrong, but I live here too. It's usually Saturday, Sunday, maybe Labor Day weekend or fourth of July weekend, so it's really rarely during the week you see anything. Because the other parking is more insufficient, so you're talking maybe for those thirty-six months of the year, I think that's the number, you're talking two days out of the week. If that pervious coverage that you're talking about, this is where I came to my question, okay? That would help you out, right, because it would be more.
Yes.
But if, if the materials don't lend itself to that, and there are rules which you just mentioned, so be it, I'm just.
Yeah, the other thing to note is we would still need to, so just to clarify, I'm not, we're not taking credit from a zoning bulk perspective for the pervious paving, that's considered impervious per the definition, so we're not taking credit for that, I'm just. I'm adding that that is, it does provide many of the benefits that a permeable surface would traditionally, so we're not counting that as. Permeable from a zoning and bulk perspective, if you take that area into consideration, we'd be. Permeable from a zoning and bulk perspective. If you take that area into consideration, we'd be. Roughly 50% if we did take that into consideration of impervious cover, not the 63. So just to clarify.
With regard to parking spaces, can you please elaborate on why your schematic do not reflect? The township's requirement of parking islands with landscaping?
Yeah, so that's something that the landscape architect, the boards landscape architect did identify. You know, our interpretation of the ordinance was related to the trees within the parking areas and the parking islands. We designed it to meet that. Adding in the parking islands, we we would have to look into that to see if we could configure the site and accommodate the additional islands. But this would be a waiver based on the waiver request, based on the ordinance or the, I'm sorry, the review letter provided by the boards landscape architect.
Yep, and not not even close to being an engineer or understanding all this, but I assume that if you were to reconfigure that, this 180 response into individual islands. That's going to take up more space than what you have allocated in the plan that you submitted.
Then that there there wouldn't be a net change in the impervious cover necessarily. It would just be. The trees would be located within the parking field as opposed to on the perimeter of the parking field.
Talking about actually the amount of land that would be necessary to accommodate islands versus one spot right after the load.
It's something that we, if the board is not receptive to a design waiver on that, it's something that we would have to look at to see the impact of including the landscape islands in.
I mean, when I look at just just roughly, if you provide parking island, every eight spaces, which is fully said. Looking at this preparation, it's about 15 parking islands, need one of those parts that might be. So there's 300.
That's right. That's that's assuming that we we actually reduce the number of spaces. If we were to just reconfigure and weave in those. Curved landscape islands, it would be a net balance of impervious. There would be no difference in impervious coverage.
Hey, Jeff, is that a is that a variance from a zoning ordinance requirement or a design waiver?
It's a design standard waiver.
Okay, thanks.
Are you going to have a landscape architect talk about the landscaping plan or are you doing that testimony?
Okay, I'm going to provide the testimony and that we did have the landscape architect.
Yeah, we're gonna. We're going to get to the point of getting you to go through all our professionals reports point by point. So this is just an issue that we're bringing up now.
Yeah, we're prepared to get to the professionals reports sometime.
I am. I do want to loop back one more on the parking. You mentioned that there was no need to have handicap parking on this site, because there's handicap parking. At the the main field complex. Now that this area is being paved. And sidewalks are being put in versus gravel roads, it would seem that then the. Opportunity to provide handicap parking in this lot is is greatly improved because of the mobility issues. You know, it seems like that would be a good idea.
Sure. So the ADA standards actually require that the ADA parking spaces be located. It essentially says as close as practical as practically possible to the use that they are being provided for. So placing them across this, you know, basically making someone who has accessible needs traverse up across this intersection and down to the use. Would not be consistent with the ADA guidelines.
Did did were the number of spots increased over at the main facility when this parking went in to offset the what would be the associated ADA?
I would need to double check. I don't know offhand the number of parking spaces, but they would be required to conform with. The overall parking provided for the facility. As you go up in spaces with the ED, I would just need to double check that, but but the short answer is yes. Anything further on? Yeah, I just wanted to.
Start asking you questions.
Just finish off on the utility. So. The sanitary sewer connections would be made into the Old River Road. Right away, there's an existing sanitary sewer line in there. So that's where we would be connecting for the proposed sanitary sewer. I already described the stormwater, so I was going to touch on that now, but I think I've I've covered the basics on stormwater system that's being proposed.
Well, there's more specific questions in the engineering report.
Sure, happy to happy to run through those. For the domestic or the sorry, the portable water and fire water service connection. So we've actually, as part of our application package, we identified as basically two potential methods for water service connection. The first would be a water main extent, because there is no water main directly adjacent to this property. The first option would be to that we're pursuing and the primary option would be a water main extension to the south, to the nearest New Jersey American Water Water Main. We have made application to New Jersey American Water for a water main extension. Again, it's approximate, the the existing water main is approximately 1800. Feet south of this property over near where the new, the relatively new warehouse developments are occurring closer to like many accounting road. This, so that's the the primary option that that would. Provide service again for the domestic war use, which is pretty minimal for this particular project. And it would also provide the use, the water for the fire suppression system for sprinklers. The secondary option, should that not be viable, would be to provide a well and a water tank. The water tank would be specifically only required because of fire suppression. So to meet the demands identified for the sprinkler system in the building. So as part of the application. Package, we did include a location for a water tank to the north of the building. It's a circular structure to the north of the building. Should that option be required? So. I did want to identify that. It does meet criteria as far as setbacks and. And it is considered in the other calculations for both requirements, should that be needed. But we would anticipate that that would only be required in the situation that we'd have to go to utilize a well to service for water. Or if the when the calculations are complete with New Jersey American Water, if there's. The flows are too low or pressures are too low to meet demands of the fire suppression system, we would also need to utilize a tank. So that's what that. Water tank, proposed water tank is to the north of the building here within that triangular island. So for sight lighting, just want to briefly describe the sight lighting. We are using LED lights, a nice uniform. Even distribution, very economical. The board engineer, your board engineer did request that we consider 3500. Calvin max. Light temperature, which is just a softer light than the 4000 we're proposing, very similar, but a little bit softer. That's something we would we would consider. To to meet that request. There was also a request to provide some additional lighting near that pedestrian access point of the northwest corner. Where that sidewalk is connecting to the Bartles Corner Road River Road intersection. So that's another request that we would be willing to address, provide some path lighting there, make it uniform. And consistent with the ordinance criteria for lighting. We are requesting a waiver. For maximum light values at a property line. So 0.5 foot candles are what the maximum permitted at a property line. We are requesting 2.7 foot candles. However, I'd like to know that that is limited only to the property line near the access drive at the southeast corner. It's a pretty typical waiver that we end up requesting, because we want to make sure we're providing safe and adequate lighting for the access drive to the site. With respect to landscaping. Again, we meet with the exception of the waiver that we just identified previously for trees within the parking field. Islands, we do meet all the landscaping criteria. We've reviewed the the suggestions from the boards landscape architect. Happy to go through those and we would consider the recommendations as far as species and making some adjustments on location as well. There was also a request that should the water tank be proposed, we provided an evergreen. Evergreen trees around that water tank. That's another. Item that we'd be happy to consider providing the trees should that tank be proposed.
I guess we should have asked, is that tank above ground?
The tank is above ground. The plans do include a detail. It and again, the size would would vary. We were, I would say, a bit conservative on the size that we show in our detail. But it's that you look at the detail, it looks pretty similar to like a. Like a grain silo type type structure.
And I believe the size of that tank is 275,000 gallons.
Yeah, I believe that's correct. That's so. But but again, it's not, that's somewhat representative. That's our estimate. I would think it was in the in the project architect could probably touch on that a little, a little bit more detail. But it is an estimate, because we don't know for certain what the available pressures will be in close. I think that concludes my direct that I had.
Okay.
I think it's probably good at this point to go through the report. I I have. Made some notes, but it might be better just to actually. So I'd like to start with Mr. Vacarella's report of yesterday, December 12. And that report. Starts on page two. And I think the issues that we need to address are number 16 business operation skipping to the things that were. If I skip, it means we're going to do it, or I don't think it's an issue. And if if you want me to stop me, but I don't want to read the whole report in the record.
You're skipping the ones that have been.
The ones that have been discussed. And if somebody else is going to testify to it, like architecture.
Let me let me do let me do this. Mr. Vacarella has outlined in comments one to 10, the variance relief sought. You you agree with those comments and those are the variance relief sought?
Yes.
Okay. And then he's indicated 11 professional planning testimony is required. We'll leave, I assume you have a planner?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, why don't why don't we then proceed with 12 and onward?
Okay, can you briefly describe the timeframe for resolution compliance and construction that was provided in that amended letter of intent? I don't know if he's asking for a comment or just noting that we provided that in the letter of intent. Do you need testimony on that or?
Plans would be submitted in construction, so 17, 24.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. It it stated that plans would be submitted and construction would eventually start within 17 to 24 months. If you could just, if that's still. That's that's the plan. That's in the amended letter of intent.
Okay.
I think we've addressed number 13 with respect to the bolt standard changes and the variance relief that we've requested. Number 14. Is just recognizing that the use is permitted.
Excuse me, but the only place where those standards were changed was on this cover sheet we got this evening, not on the original set of plans.
I think they were amended on a revised set of plans in November.
We did amend and resubmit plans that are similar, same book tables, what you have in front of you.
Okay, it's not the not the set that the. That we received.
Not the full set, just the one sheet.
Just the one sheet was changed.
Okay, I think we were asked to amend that sheet to reflect the plan, which is what we did. We did submit that.
No, Steve, I have the letter right here. You only did the 15 copies that I just handed out. So the actual site plans were not.
Right, but I think we were asked, rather than amending the whole setting, a whole new set of plans with the new table to just supply that sheet, which I believe we did.
Yep. Well, then I'm guessing for future, any other plans would reflect that table?
Yeah, yeah, but. I'm answering the question whether we submitted a whole new set of plans with that top sheet changed. And the answer was we were requested just to supply that one sheet rather than killing a whole bunch of.
One sheet is what's been more gay too.
All right, well, A2 is the colorized version, but yes.
But but it's so the last just the last revision date is November 17, 2023, just for the record.
Yeah.
Right, I just I just want to.
Yep.
So when we have a transcript, we're talking about a plan, we know what the last revision date is, just housekeeping.
That's fine. Number 15, recognizing he attached the resolutions. God bless you. I'm going to interrupt you. I'll bring you back to 14. The open item on 14 is going back to the board of adjustment, right? Or determining if you need to go back to the board of adjustment on the 50 bank spaces.
Yeah, I mean, that's something we could discuss before the next meeting. We could have a discussion, you may and 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 John draw on that. He. Seems to think that you do need to go back, but obviously that's something that that has arisen and we can we can hash out.
Yeah, and I'm happy to work with Mr. Bellardo and Mr. Dry. On resolving that issue, but 14 doesn't raise that issue, which is why I didn't. That's why I raised it. 15 is the attaching of the resolution. 16, we've discussed the business operations and I'll provide some additional testimony as to business operations. 17, we've said we're not going to do any truck rental business. 18, six foot high fence is proposed, but what's the finished color of that fence? Do we know or do we have to add somebody else?
No, so the fence that's proposed, there's the chain link fence, which is along River Road. We're essentially going to match what's out there today. It's a chain link. Kind of like a black vinyl type chain link fence, which we would match along the frontage to River Road. The other fences that are proposed are essentially like a wood slipboard fence around the detention basins with a mesh. The mesh screen as well. So those are the two different types of fence that are proposed.
Yeah. Number number 19, I I got to be honest with you, no offense, Jeff, but I didn't understand it, because I think two comments got merged into one. As it says, it appears the discharge to the retention basis is connected to the public system. On the applicant shall provide testimony to the characteristics of the facade and name of the business. It appears that the font is similar to the township of Raritan font. So I I didn't understand it.
Yeah, that's that's my mistake. It should have been two separate. Comments, but the the first is in regards to the this. Discharge from the pension basin. It's it's not, there's no discharge point. It's going straight to the.
Correct. So there's no proposed downfall to daylight condition. It's connecting to the the existing county infrastructure.
And the architect will provide testimony regarding the facade.
Side.
Okay. Okay. And. Different tones of color are indicated on the floor plans. That'll be an architect. Signage, I think we testified to, but we'll provide additional testimony from the architect. 22, same thing. Will the ground directional signage be permanent or temporary?
My interpretation of the request is that we would provide a permanent, just small directional signage to guide. Domination customers to where they should be parking.
And we're happy to work with the boards professionals on the nature, location of that directional signage.
Yes.
Do you have an idea of how large it's going to be or?
Not offhand. We would want to conform with the the ordinance requirements as far as directional signage is concerned. So we would be wanting to work within the confines of what that is.
It's three square feet, so if you're exceeding that, it would just be an additional request.
Understood. I think we can work within that requirement.
Okay.
Number 24.
So you're going to meet the three foot square for the directional.
For directional signage, yes.
Yes. Number 24 was a question regarding the RTM UA granting one EDU for use on. That they had granted on December 5th and then their report at the end, I've got to be honest with you, when we got that. Yesterday, we scrambled and I have a letter from the RTM UA with today's date that I'd like to mark into. As exhibit A3. And I can read it into the record. It's to Mr. McKenna. It says, it's from Michael Sis, executive director of the RTM UA. For your request for a will serve letter for the above, we have the following information. At this time, the authority. At this time, the authority is only allocating three hundred gallons per day. For one E D U per project. If the project is built as proposed to us as a three-story storage building with three employees, it will require under three hundred gallons per day. But slash one equivalent dwelling to E D U. An application for sanitary sewer service will be required for approval before the project is built. So. We're allocated one and we require one. Thanks for taking care of that.
I'm just gonna reiterate, if everybody could please speak into the mic, just because I can't hear you guys half the time. And I don't know about the sonographer, but just so it's clear.
Okay, for the record, we're taking a pause for a minute. Yeah, yeah. I tell you what, why don't we take a five-minute break? It's ten after come back at eight, eight fifteen and give you a break. Okay, township planning board is now back in session. Thank you. You get to go. So I was going to submit exhibit A three. Yes, that's where you were.
Give it to Taylor. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you for taking care of that.
No, no, we're we're at number twenty-five.
Yep. Wetlands letter and the status of the LOI submission.
Yeah, so we did have an environmental sinus wetland specialist do a site walk of the adjacent property where the. Wetlands were identified. There are no wetlands on site. There was wetlands on an adjacent property. We had those field delineated. The. Wetland specialist advised that they were well beyond the area of their anticipated transition area. We submitted a wetlands memorandum memorandum summarizing that, and we have filed. A letter of interpretation presence absence to the D E P. There's no specific time criteria for the presence absence, so it's hard for me to say status and when we'd expect back, but it has been filed. Typically, I'd expect it back within a couple of months to to verify our findings.
And there there was an issue, though, if it's deemed a higher resource value wetland, the buffer may just touch the edge of the property, correct?
If there's a potential that if they change the resource value, it would be very close. Possibly touch the the perimeter.
Correct. Number twenty-six, we'll do that. Reorient the planning board stamp box. Twenty-seven, I think we talked about the county planning board approval status as conditional approval. Twenty-eight, we'll do that. Twenty-nine, township agency review shall be addressed, and we have the fire review. Which we're willing to do, correct?
Uh, correct.
That's dated November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We have the. Historians committee, which is has indicated. That the site is located in an archaeological site grid. It should not be paved over. Our our position on this is quite honestly that there is no historic district enacted by ordinance, which has any type of design standards here. Or ordinance standards and that the historic. Committee honestly. Doesn't have the authority even under its powers and duties to make recommendations to this board. If, but we we'd like to gauge your temperature and the board's professionals' temperatures because we're hearing tonight that there is. Discussion about the coverage issue and impervious coverage issue, and the overflow parking right now is not paved. And if we left. The. Overflow parking area with those spaces. Without paving it and used it that way, is that something that the board would prefer to see in a potential site design as opposed to paving it with input from your professionals?
This professional will weigh in because I feel like I have to. I am not a fan of unpaved parking. There's a couple of issues with it. One of them is that it's a constant source of water quality issues because you always have grit. Running off and also one hundred eighty-three spaces quickly becomes one hundred and seventy because you can't. Really stripe it well. People park where they want to park. They park too far apart. So I it'd be my recommendation that it be paved.
For those reasons, it's actually required. It's a very, it would be a variance for that. Request. To not pay the curfew. Even though it's not paved today.
From I I totally agree with the water quality perspective, unpaved. Surface areas that accept. And runoff from motor vehicles generate more non-point source pollution than. Because it's going right into the groundwater and not going through any stormwater water quality protection. So it's from a water quality and a sediment and a. You know. There's a reason why townships have paved dirt roads. You know, so I would not be in favor of it.
And I would just weigh in from a practical point of view. Effectively, when you have car traffic on grass over one period of time. The soil becomes so active that it's effectively. Maybe not by definition, but.
I guess that answered that question, but I wanted to try to address it for you because we heard that you might have some interest in.
Sure, so.
Moving on then to the. Recycling.
Well, I'm sorry, where where is this archaeological grid on this site?
Was anything given idea about the architect archaeological grid and this type? It's not in an ordinance standard or a historic district. Per your ordinance, correct? But per the township's ordinance, correct?
Correct, so the. This was something that was identified in the environmental report, but all it is is reference to the NJDPs. They have a G I S, an online database for mapping of environmentally sensitive areas and planning areas and things like that. And essentially, my understanding is that. When there's a historical site everywhere within approximately one mile rectangle is great is is identified as a grid. So if you actually go on the. NJDP's Geo website and you look at, you select the grids, a good bit, the whole surrounding area and a good. Portion of Raritan Township would be in a grid. So saying this is a size within an archaeological grid is true, but it. In my experience, again, I'm a professional engineer, not an archaeologist, but just in dealing with this sort of thing through the D E P and and ship out. It's not necessarily. A higher resource value site when there's no ordinance or permit that I'm aware of that we would be required to apply for.
And a large portion. Is it true that a large portion of Raritan Township would be considered as part of the archaeological grid?
Part of a grid, yes.
A grid.
Third, yes.
Yeah. Another thing is that this this property is also in the Raritan Reddington South Branches store district. Which encompasses. Most of the properties on River Road, but I don't believe this property was listed as as a historic site.
It's not identified as a historic site on the D E P's database.
And there's no historic structures on this site, correct?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
It's vacant. There's no structure.
Again, I I can't go all the way back in the beginning of history and say there was never anything there, but I'm aware of.
And that's no structure on the site, yeah. Right, right now there's.
And as identified by the D E P on their database, there's nothing identified there.
And then recycling, we're happy to do that, too. And that, I believe, is Mr. Baccarella's report. Paul Wells' report, even though it's planning, I can go through.
Do a Ferraro report first.
Why don't you do the call or report with your planner? Doesn't that make more sense?
Sorry.
I'm sorry, there was another one from. The fire marshal.
I said we do that.
Okay.
Yeah. Mr. Ferraro's report. Will do everything one A, one B.
Wait, excuse me, hold on.
Why don't you identify a page?
Two.
Yeah.
One A.
Their report is dated December eleventh.
The report is dated December eleventh, twenty twenty-three, comprising six pages.
And on the second page. Paragraph one A. That will be signed. We will do that. Number B or letter B, ATM lighting can be removed from the plan. We'll do that. The demolition plan, can you provide testimony with respect to the isolated pipe north of the driveway culvert?
Sure, so there is an existing swell that runs along the eastern edge of the property and there's, I believe, two. Pipes for vehicular crossings there. Under the proposed conditions. The majority of that runoff would be collected in the curved area of the site. And. Collected by the inlets proposed. So we are proposing removal of that. I'd be happy to take a closer look at this and address any concerns. But that was the intent was that we would remove those pipes and. The majority of that stormwater would be collected and. Convene with the onsite proposed system.
I I have no issue with the removal of the pipes.
Letter one D one, can you provide testimony regarding whether we only need one. ADA accessible space barrier free subcode?
Yes, one space required for the proposed seventeen spaces. It is van accessible and would meet the. Minimum standards of the eleven-foot wide space with the five-foot.
I'm gonna ask you to speak up a little. That that's not a great microphone.
Oh, sorry. Yes, one space is required and it will be van accessible and meet the minimum dimensions required by ADA for van accessible space.
And I think that also ties back to the. Prior discussion by the board about how many accessible stalls are provided in the main parking lot because it'd be. Overflow stalls need to be accounted for in that analysis.
So. That's information that we'll get prior to.
Making a note. That takes care of two. One and two, can you provide the basis for determining the number of E B stalls?
The the basis for determining the number of E P was the four percent requirement, the one batch of that would be seven spaces for the one hundred and eighty-three. Overfill spaces and one for the seventeen proposed self-storage spaces. So that's an eight total spaces. And I had identified those during my direct, but they are to the. North side of the northern edge of the building. And are calling on the site plane.
D four will provide additional testimony regarding operations. Five signage recommended traffic for signage for traffic heading to a large parking field be installed directional. We'll do that. Six. Testimony regarding the construction phasing plan. We are agreeing to provide a construction phasing, correct?
I think the question is, this is gonna be a difficult if this overflow area is used significantly. So what happens when that's taken out of use? I think that's that's got to be thought through a little bit because if they lose. The one hundred and eighty-three stalls that are used all the time because they're reconstructing the entire area, where are those vehicles going to go? And obviously, you're not constructing. In. December, January, February with the weather, so there needs to be some coordination on that.
Yeah, we'll we'll provide additional information on that and work with the board's professionals on coordination of that construction.
I think the board wants to hear it.
Yeah.
Not not after any approval. I think the board wants to hear as part of your direct testimony plan.
Understood. I've already known D seven, we agreed no outdoor storage of vehicles, mobile homes, et cetera. E grading plan, these. I can go through each one of those, but we will correct these plans to address these changes. Or the maximum height of the retaining wall should be shown on the plans. And none of them are going to exceed forty-eight inches in height, correct?
Uh, correct.
F drainage and utility plan. The status of the evaluation of the potential extension for waters. I think you already testified to that. Is there anything else you need to add on that?
Not unless there's follow-up questions, though.
And if the water tank is constructed, the fire hydrants will still be constructed, correct?
Correct.
And. We agreed to have it approved by the fire official, correct?
Correct.
What's your determination which way you go? When you get permission, we have the letter from.
So the RTM UA letter is for sanitary sewer specifically. For so for New Jersey American Water, we have filed the application. There's a water main extension application, so we're. Without, they need to do an analysis on their end, and then we would need to work through the application process, which we have started and we're working through. So it really just comes down to whether or not it's, there's a lot of different agencies involved. So it's a New Jersey American Water, the state, the county. So I can't guarantee that that's a viable option right now, so we wanted to provide. Just kind of prevent any. I think the preference should be viable for all those different circumstances would be to connect above the water.
Soil conservation district, the G, we agree we need to get certification as a condition to.
Have you submitted?
We have, yes.
To. Whether the soil conservation district has indicated whether a spillway needs to be lined for stability.
Yeah, that's something that we will work. I I don't believe that that was flagged by the district, but we'll obviously make sure that they're sufficient.
And we're looking, they're looking for a plan for the route for vehicles to reach the parking field during the construction of the building and. We'll be providing that, correct?
Correct.
H will be getting to that with John Morgan Thomas's report. I lighting plan. There's no, number one, there's no objection to the waiver request that we testified to. Number two. The hours of operation of the self-storage facility, we're going to provide additional.
Sorry, would you go back to number one? You said there's no objection?
I have no objection to the waiver.
Number two, the hours of operation will provide additional testimony with respect to that and the the lighting in connection with that. And three, we already agreed to reduce the maximum light temperature to thirty-five hundred kelvin. J one. Will provide the geotechnical report and two. The, we agree that the fire hydrant detail will be approved by the fire official. K. The survey, number one. We provided that testimony regarding the pipet wall location.
I I don't think you talked about the the isolated pipe, but you didn't talk about the head wall up near the. The road on the northern portion of the site. It looks like it drains. Into the site.
Yeah, that's something we could probably talk further on. I've done a field evaluation of that. I'm. Very confident that that actually discharges to the north of the county road. I tried to, we've done some over requests to try and find out exactly what the purpose of that bike was, but again, I'm happy to. Discuss that burn with you, get, you know, whatever information you need to to. Be satisfied that that's not going to create drainage onto our site. And if and if for any reason we think that it would, we could make the connection to the proposed conveyance system.
And and the the point is that it would need to be accounted in the stormwater design if it does drain to the property.
Correct, and we would agree to do that.
But that potentially, since it's going under the road to the other side of the property, could be a large drainage area, couldn't it?
Based on what I've. I like, I went out there and I did, I did evaluate in the field and I don't believe so. It basically falls off right on the other side of the north side of the road. There's really.
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
That might be, it it appears to me that that pipe was actually a discharge pipe at one point in the past, so I don't believe based on my field evaluation that there's actually flow coming from that pipe. But again, I would be happy to. Provide. Whatever data would be considered sufficient by the board engineer to verify that.
Number Roman numeral two architectural plans will provide that testimony. Three, stormwater management report, I'm gonna just let you take it away on all these.
Yeah, so I'm not sure how far into into the details to get on these, but.
I I can potentially shortcut it.
Yeah.
They need more soil testing. Is is the bottom line, all the new. GI to green infrastructure standards are all tightly tied into soil testing. And every application I've ever seen always needs more. So they do need some more on that, that a lot of these are comments based on the soils work. And some of the information that flows from that, so we have to get that and then we will, we will review the information as it comes in.
When do we, do we give that as part of this current application?
I I I think we need to because it can impact. The the layout of the detention basin, because the way that we look at it. The drainage area to the bio retention system is too large. There's a maximum standard for that under the rules and it looks like it's too big, so they may have to make some modifications to lay out.
Somewhat similar to the additional testing we required for the. The at the.
Warehouse.
Yeah, well, also the, that wasn't, I wasn't here for that. Well, what are they calling the place near Costco?
Rear junction.
Yes.
Right, okay, okay, I got it.
And and Paul, in your letter, there does seem to be some problems with permeability issues and soil compaction and.
And that's, and that's what the additional testing is going to show.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll do that and regroup on the storm waters, or anything else, any other comments on the storm water that you wish us to address now?
I. No, I think, I think they're pretty self-explanatory.
But I can miss soil testing, are we, I lost track anymore, I don't worry about these things, but wet season, dry season, can they be done anytime?
Supposed to be wet season testing, so they have to do it in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
Once January first hits, the wet season is here.
Okay, okay, so.
And historically. School has been. Kind to applicants, you said. Work it out with the engineer. But more recently, we take a different path where we want that patient, we want to see. Want to explain that, so I think. Very, the applicant will notice that. It was recently, we're can't particularly come to. Stormwater. Make a condition of this would be approved.
Understand what you're saying. So. I think that's it for Mr. Ferrero's report, I'm happy to go on to Ms. Caldwell's report. Well, I'll tell you what, maybe this is a good place to. Make sure that the board, does anybody have any additional questions for Mr. McKenna? On the items that have been testified to so far?
Can I just ask one, him to clarify one thing, I think we can all see it, but. The seventeen parking spaces that will be reserved for the self-storage. Will be the thirteen head-in spaces on the. West side of the building near the loading area and then the four. Parallel spaces on the east side of the building.
Correct. Right, so I should keep it out to the public if we have anybody here this evening or online who has any questions for Mr. McKenna in that testimony? There being none?
Bill, or is there anyone even online that's?
There's nobody online.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll throw it back to you then.
And then I guess if he's being excused, I had three site plan comments at the end of my memo just to confirm, you could make those. Plan changes and comments eleven, twelve and thirteen.
Yeah, we're still going to go through the rest of the reports.
Okay.
Why does Jay get the best mic?
I said the cable ones are way better.
Sounds like Charlie Brown's teacher over there.
So you don't need a better mic.
I think on. Ms. Caldwell's report. By my going through it, we skip to substantively for us to address other than identifying things where there might be questions. Is page.
What's the date of a report for the record?
December seventh, two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you.
Would be on page. Reports not paid, not paginated. So it would be paragraph. Eight, under proposed project, right above the use and bulk requirements table. She asked us to confirm that the proposed parking is within fourteen hundred feet of the entrance to the Diamond Nation facility. Can you please testify with respect to that issue?
It is within fourteen hundred feet.
The rest are of these comments are. Going are identifying the variances or. Waivers that might be required as to use number twelve. She asked the question twelve be a water tank is shown on the plans, the applicant should describe the proposed tank and its proposed use. I think you testified to that, is there anything else you want to add? No. On the next page, B, Roman numeral little three, the applicant should provide testimony regarding the projected. Pedestrian traffic flow and if the proposed sidewalks are sufficient to accommodate the pedestrian traffic.
But we do again, believe that's an improvement and would be adequate for. The demand for pedestrian traffic flow.
How wide are the proposed sidewalks that are gonna be now improved?
The proposed sidewalk is six feet wide. I don't know exactly how wide the existing is, it's kind of various because it's not actually.
Six feet. That meets our standard.
Moving on to number thirteen. Actually fourteen A. The report indicates that we're proposing one makeover, make-ready space, but it's actually eight that we're proposing, correct?
Correct.
So, and that complies, we don't need any design waiver relief for that. Correct.
Correct.
Mr. Ferrero, could you go back to the previous page under thirteen? See, and then there's a. With respect to the loading spaces. Recording case to closing two loading spaces within the front part of the building.
Yeah, I'm gonna have a different witness test to bias to that and as also to the following paragraph. So we'll, we'll deal with that with a different question, thanks, sorry, I skipped over because I knew I was gonna do it someplace else. Deal with fourteen B, the one hundred and eighty-three overflow parking spaces, that doesn't apply because we're providing eight instead of the seven that if the waiver wasn't.
I would know we are, we are providing the seven, it's eight total, so one for the seventeen. Self-storage facility spaces and seven for the one hundred and eighty-three, so we are proposing as outlined in this letter.
But that's, we're not asking for a waiver.
That's correct, no, we're not asking for a waiver.
We agreed with respect to all the lighting requests and testified with respect to the overflow lighting, correct?
Correct, we agreed to provide. Additional lighting within the pedestrian path of travel.
And C, we agree to all non-essential outdoor lighting fixtures turned off after close of business unless needed for safety or security. We agree to that.
Correct.
That implicates the question we asked before, though, with respect to the twenty-four hour access of the twenty-four hour active. Lighting. At the ten block, so we need to address that, we talked about.
We will. Thank you. We already talked about fifteen, the design waiver for the foot candles. I think we provide a testimony with respect to the fences, the testimony confirming the chain link thing tight is six feet. We provided, we will provide additional testimony with respect to the wall signs. And we already agreed that we're not proposing a ground sign. The rest is criteria. Can I get some clarification on the variance that you're seeking for the minimum lot area? Because that was all approved back in two thousand and twelve, it was determined that that difference between four point eight nine nine and five was de minimis. And it was approved.
Correct.
Are you seeking approval of variance again because along the lines of the fifty bank parking spaces, this is a new application? We're because and because it's a pre-existing lot and will present planning testimony in support of that variance to the extent it's required. Thank you. Landscape architects report from John Morgan Thomas dated. December eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. Can you confirm number one that we're in compliance with the tree removal ordinances?
Yes.
That just requires a note. I didn't see.
Thank you. Tree protection, single linear fence along the line of just limited disturbance rather than the individual fence rings would be preferable in this situation.
Okay, yeah, we've no objection to. Addressing that.
Number three, no tree replacements are required, which we agree with. Number four, parking lot landscaping, this is the issue dealing with islands in the parking lot landscaping that we're going to evaluate and get back to you on.
That that was actually number five, number four, we did provide calculations on our. Landscape sheet, it's a separate compliance chart, so I'm not sure if the comment is that we didn't provide or they're not.
I may have missed that. But we'll have to have a discussion about how you calculated that because.
Sure.
I can look at this right now and. Be pretty certain you have not have the fifteen percent requirement based on the ordinance.
Okay, yeah, we can provide it in exhibit.
And this would, this would play back into. Obviously, if you're putting in. Required. Parking lot tree islands, that could, that contributes to this. To this required. But for the most part. The parking lot landscape requirement. Is only satisfied for the most part by island. You don't have any, so I kind of. I think we'll have to, we'll have to do that again.
Okay, good. Six, we've buffers and screen plannings are not required because all surrounding uses are non-residential. The remainder of this report, I think, is just. Speaking. The size of the the trees in terms of shade treats and ornamentals and selection of. Different types of.
They're they're different, exactly, there, there's some more technical things, I would say that on number seven on street trees, I think you've met the requirement, but I'm actually. There, you're proposing street trees along the Bullet River Road. Which really isn't a street anymore, so they're not required, and even if they were required, there's an overhead power line running all along there, so they they couldn't be planted anyway. So all those trees need to be, those trees would not be. They would need to be.
But removed from the plan.
Removed from the plan.
And are you asking for anything in their replacement or just removing them?
Well, it's, 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 we're, we're limited and what I was asking for is that in the, in the area. That's. Adjacent to the main parking field in the northeast corner of the site. I think some combination of. Smaller trees and shrubs would be desirable and some of that, depending on how it's configured, may contribute to the parking lot. So would not be fulfilling the street tree requirement, but this is the other reason why you need. The additional street trees within the parking field because. You can't plant any on the entire eastern edge of the parking area because of power. And on some of the other perimeter areas of the parking area, including the the northern area, one park, park's corner road. There's another overhead power line where again, we, you know, we can't plant any canopy trees that might shake or so. That's, that's all part of addressing.
But just to clarify, John, you're. It's still one per eight.
It's still one per eight, yes. Absolutely.
Is there anything else in the report that we need to address?
Of the last item on fencing, and I know you discussed this a little bit, so the the fence. The the six-foot chain link fence, black. It spends all along River Road and it appeared that it had turned on the. Southern boundary of the property where it's adjacent to the basin. The six-foot chain link fence, and I was just making a suggestion and then there's also a fence around the. The bio retention basin and it it just created a kind of an odd space between the two fences that. It seemed redundant and if there was, if you could take a look at that and evaluate it, it's just, to me, it's gonna create a maintenance problem. Where you have two fences side by side and. Like, why couldn't you combine the use of both of them?
Yeah, we would agree, agree to evaluate that.
And there was another item under the plant selection, and this is something that I'd like to review with Mr. Ferraro of this stuff. Is the, the actual planting within the bio retention basin, and I understand that there's some new standards for the bio retention basins that deal with stem count and a few other things. But I'd like to see if we could somehow adapt this to. More herbaceous planting because I honestly don't know how anybody's gonna maintain these. Basins planted with shrubs. It's, it's a challenge, there are the DEP standards, we'll have to look at that, but we can, we can talk about it as a group.
We're happy to work with you on that.
And then the requirement of the hydrant potentially to water. Plants during disestablishment.
Whatever we plant in there, I, I would, we're not requiring, I, I, I'm not suggesting a permanent irrigation system. That provides some kind of a frost-proof hydrant on this side of the, on the basin side so that you can. You'll be able to water this planting while it's being established.
Understood. And Mr. Troutman's report dated December eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, I think the. Operational testimony we provided and will provide additional one, but eleven, twelve and thirteen, we're willing to do. And that's it for my testimony for Mr. McKenna.
Excellent. Yeah, you went over it, uh. Before, or as it is now, this area, you have a hundred and eighty-three parking spaces. So when new projects done as designed. You have seventeen that's applied to the building, how many more will be overflowed? Baseball.
Hundred and eighty-three. Yeah, sorry, that's, that's the individual number, so there's, it's actually two hundred total.
Well, that, will that alleviate the parking that we see on? River Road. On the southeast side where people are now parking, actually on both sides. Um, you know, the railroad tracks, etc., so. That seems to get full and then people park on the roadside, so does this plan, pardon me?
That's illegal parking.
I see it, so is this plan gonna help alleviate that pressure for parking?
I think I would be speculating to say that it would or wouldn't, I think it would offer a more practical and efficient, as Mr. Ferrero said before.
Striping.
Stripping and actually properly, properly delineating the parking could potentially. Add some, you know, more functional spaces, but I, I wouldn't, I'd be speculating if I were to say it would. Stop something that's already not part of the.
But with a hundred and eighty-three space is. As approved by the board, just gonna be a hundred and eighty-three space.
Yeah, so then.
Probably the only additional hunting is for storage.
Right, okay.
Correct, it's in that. It's in that, yeah, there's no increase.
It's fair to say that it does provide.
It's, it's fair to say that it does provide a, a more defined and with the addition of the walkways and particularly lighted walkways provide a, a, a better functioning parking lot for the overflow parking that might encourage people to use it more than, than any current status.
I would say certainly, in my opinion, an improvement, improvement over what's existing for those reasons.
You can legislate if people actually read the sign and not park there. Okay. I'm always amazed when I see cars parked there with the rope. I mean, these guys do a great job of putting rope and signs and I go by and I see all these cars. That's one of these people just not, not read. It's not that hard.
I know.
Sorry.
But I think it is.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions for Mr. McKenna from the board members? No, we have to throw it out to the public. There is nobody online. If anybody's here in the room with us has any questions. Mr. McKenna, now would be the time on his testimony. No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Call Mr. Bolger forward.
I suggest the rest of your witnesses sit next to you because maybe that mic is just better.
Okay.
You'll state your name for the record.
Kevin Wolter.
U L G E.
Mr. Wolter, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in connection with your testimony tonight by either affirming or so help me God? You're sworn.
Thank you.
Mr. Bolger, can you please give the board the benefit of your qualifications?
Yes, good evening, members of the board. I'm here tonight to testify as an expert in self-storage operations. I work for Perry and Patrol Architects and I am the program director for all of our self-storage clientele. By way of professional background, I am a licensed planner and landscape architect in the state of New Jersey. I have a bachelor's degree in landscape architecture, master's degree in planning, both from Rutgers University. Although I am licensed, I won't be testifying in that capacity tonight, only as an expert in self-storage. To that extent, with that in that regard, I began my career in self-storage as the director of acquisition and development for public storage. Uh, thereafter, I've been paid by simply self-storage, who at the time was a subsidiary of Brookfield Properties to be their preferred development consultant in the northeast. Uh, thereafter, I, we've done work for a, a number of major self-storage owners and operators such as public storage, extra space, Cube Smart, StoreQuest and so forth, um, as well as independent developers, owners and operators of self-storage such as this app. Tonight, uh, many of whom hire us for our operational know-how and, and overall design experience in self-storage. As such, we get involved right in the very beginning, uh, to make sure that the, uh, facilities are done and designed, uh, per industry standards, uh, which we've done here from inception construction, and I testified in New Jersey and elsewhere in that capacity.
Okay, so thank you. You're approved, but I have a question. There were a number of questions as we went through Mr. McKenna's testimony that referred to the architect. That's not you tonight. You don't have that hat. You're testifying as a specialist in self-storage.
From my firm.
Okay, just want to make sure.
He'll, he'll be testifying.
Okay, he's not offering any license through, through estates, testifying as someone with background and experience in self-storage.
We're, we're going to still get to the architect testimony and that might have overlapped, but
Make sure.
It's the same firm. This is a self-storage expert to answer the building operations questions in particular. So you've heard that the board has a lot of questions about building operations of the self-storage, number of daily visitors, types of material, hours of operation. Can you give the board an overview of, of what we're proposing for this type of facility?
Yeah, there you go.
Before I start my testimony, I always like to give a little bit of background on the self-storage industry. Um, effectively, there's three different types of self-storage building construction. The first one is the single story or series of single story buildings arranged in a Barrett style, Barrett style alignment. Yeah, they typically drive up, they only want their exterior access. Uh, they're not heated or heated dishes. And that's pretty typical of a lot of the older type of self-storage. Uh, the second type is the single story building, a multi-story, uh, which offers, which is more modern, offers all interior access units. Although it will offer at times exterior access, you can tell the outside on the bottom level, which is what we're proposing here tonight. Uh, the third type is outdoor storage, parking of boats, vehicles and so forth, whatever. You're not posing any of that whatsoever at all. And the fourth type is a combination. So, um, just to reiterate, we, this is simply a single story building offering predominantly ninety percent of the units, ninety-five percent of the units are interior access only. And then we have, uh, forty-five perimeter units as described. One thing.
Yeah, just to correct you, I think you said it was a single story building. It's three story.
A single bill, a single building, that's multi-story.
Okay.
It's three levels high. Uh, so one of the things, um, that I think I'd like to point out in the beginning, that will also help, uh, understand my testimony better is that the acting currently is considering four different operators. They're all major operators. You're probably familiar with all of them. Their public storage, their Cube Smart, their extra space, their StoreQuest. Our office has done business with all four of them, uh, designing buildings for all four of them working with all of them. So we're familiar with all of their standards. Uh, one of the goals when we designed this facility was to make sure that it met all of the industry standards, which I believe it does. And then work with the civil engineer to make sure it works with town ordinance requirements to the greatest extent possible. Uh, Mr. McKenna covered a lot of, uh, the operational items. Uh, so I'll just go through them through briefly. This facility offers seventeen parking spaces. From a self-storage standpoint, for building the size, thirteen is more than enough. It also offers two internal loading areas as well. So you have the benefit of the thirteen spaces more than enough. You've got four extra spaces on the other side of the building. Then you have two internal loading areas. Uh, there's also, I think it's a forty-six drive-up units. Uh, each one of those units, um, the individual person is going to drive up to that unit. So they have the benefit of, you know, basically parking at that. As far as the layout and circulation goes, all the drive-outs meet industry standards. You have a front entrance. Uh, and you have a rear entrance where customers can go. And the reason why you have two entrances is to make is to, to limit the amount of travel distance for each customer. Which this does. On the two sides where you have the drive-up units, you have thirty-foot wide drive aisles instead of twenty-five foot. That's industry standards. It allows for two ways of traffic and it still gives enough room for a customer to drive up and travel up or next to uh, achieve. Again, this is all typical industry standard information. The majority of the units, eighty percent are of a smaller size, ten by ten or smaller. That's a pretty good distribution size. Twelve percent is medium size, ten by fifteen or ten by twenty. Only eight percent are the larger size. Majority of those are the drive-up units. So facility this type really caters to, I'm going to say, a smaller type of customer. So the majority percent being, uh, ten by ten or smaller hundred square feet. That's pretty small from a self-storage standpoint. So you can imagine most of the people showing up are going to be showing up in their cars, pickup trucks, vans and so forth. The majority of customers coming in maybe with, um, smaller van types or smaller, uh, moving vehicles like a small U-Haul or so, whatever, you know, it is obviously probably only about ten percent of your trips from that standpoint. That will happen. Uh, from an operational standpoint, as mentioned, the plan on this being operated by major, by a major self-storage operator, the ones that I have just mentioned. Generally speaking, uh, from a conservative standpoint, it may only be three to four employees overall. Uh, you're going to have one full-time employee, maybe two. If you have one full-time employee, you may have two full-times and vice versa. And then you may have a district manager that shows up a couple of times a week for a couple of hours. So it's only have maybe two to three employees on there at, at peak time. One thing I would like to clarify is the hours of operation. So originally, there are certain hours that was consistent with the amended letter of intent that was submitted with the application. Uh, since that time, we've had feedback from all the different operators. And, uh, the hours of operation we're going to propose, which is kind of consistent with all those different operators, uh, would be nine for office hours at nine AM, six PM. On that seven days a week. And, uh, for non-office hours, it would be only six AM to ten PM at night, not one, seven. Said to six AM, ten PM. That would be accessed again by the key code. So more in the day, office hours, doors are open, loading area open, you can come and go as they please. Non-office hours, you're not having to.
How is that true for the external then?
Oh, so you would have, um, I'll get into that, but you have different type of lots, mainly with the electronic blocks. And they only be allowed to operate one of those. As far as recycling refuse goes, we're going to, uh, address that. Effectively, this is a carry-in, carry-out facility. Uh, customers are not allowed to generate, you know, their own garbage and refuse. There's a deposit, there's a lease requirement, it's a force cameras. And for all intents and purposes, that's how it works. Major operators do that. That's what they do for a living. So there's a high level of confidence. That's the way it could be operated. As far as, uh, security, there's going to be modern state of the art, uh, state of the art security features. There will be, um, monitors, um, throughout the office area and so forth. There'll be cameras in all logical areas, both internally and externally. And, um, these cameras will also be, um, accessed remotely by, by management. At any given time, a manager can log in and access any given camera in any, any different place. So something, an alarm goes up or something like that, um, even though somebody's not there, um, you'll have management looking, looking at security to make sure. Especially with the major operators, they have call centers, they have headquarters, all of that's integrated.
Are they live feeds or recorded?
It's usually, um, twenty-four hour loop that they, that they hold for, uh, seven days at a time. One thing I wanted to point out was also the signage that was mentioned. Uh, so the signage there is basically just, uh, as a placeholder. Imagine once we have, uh, the owners, uh, or the operator selected, they'll have more specific signage in that regard. Same thing with color grimmey, Arctic, talk about this as well. The building itself is kind of done with nice different colors. Then you've got some color bands and so forth. Showed as a neutral color, something plus we don't have the opposite. I believe that concludes my testimony.
What is the anticipated number of daily visitors for, for the self-storage?
So from self-storage standpoint, you'll get, you'll get some numbers you'll hear later from traffic engineer regarding IT number of trips in and out, so whatever. Um, and that's done from a very, very conservative standpoint. And you'll work, look at worst case scenario and I'll try to. So what, what I typically do, and I've come from a very conservative standpoint as well. In, in the self-storage injur, industry, if you're ninety percent occupied, you're considered fully occupied. But I always take it one step back next. I'll, I did my analysis based a hundred percent off. Right now, we've got nine hundred and sixty-one units designed. That's that will, that may change slightly depending on the different operator. You have four different operators. We're all going to have four different slightly affected unit fixes. But they typically doesn't change by more than plus or minus five percent. Uh, if anything, the number goes down. So nine hundred and sixty-one units, a hundred percent occupancy. Presuming that, you know, eighty percent is residential customers, twenty percent, let's say, is more of a business type customer. You're going to have on a peak day, on a Saturday, you're going to have about four and a half visits per hour. That's at a hundred percent occupancy. That's a general average. And, um, one thing I, you know, I always like to mention is, is you know, the I T E numbers are usually very conservative and those numbers get skewed up. We'll get the type of facility that closer to areas where you have a lot more turnout. If you have a self-storage in your palace, there's a lot of turn. You have a self-storage in your military facility, a lot of turn there. So in those cases, the number is higher. An area like this where it's more suburban, those numbers are getting.
The size and frequency of trucks that will be generated by customers of the site, the largest truck type, that might be a traffic question, but.
Sure. So from an office standpoint, you're basically just going to get your, your typical van, whether it's UPS van, FedEx truck, you know, Amazon truck. We have an internal loading area. Two loading days, they're one foot wide and thirty-five feet deep. So yes, they can accommodate larger vehicles. Uh, but you're not going to get larger moving vans. The reason why I say that is moving companies, one of their ways they, they generate income is by storing the, the occupants', uh, product or, or storage items, you know, at their own facilities. It's done, you know, and, and they do it at a much cheaper rate. Um, so you'd have to be willing to spend a lot more money, spend a lot more effort to put large, um, items, stored items, moving truck, new facility, that. So it's very, very unlikely you're going to get a large moving truck van type of truck like that. But you will get smaller moving trucks, people that will rent small, small trucks.
And since we, uh, defined our hours of operation, one of the questions was whether we would limit the lighting, including signage lighting for one hour after close of business type situation, um, except for security.
Yes, that's part of the interesting.
I think that's all I have for this gentleman. So whatever we approve, we work out on the outdoor signage, the building signage. The chosen operator will be bound by that under your contract with.
Correct. They may not be too happy about it, but they'll be bound.
Okay.
Or, or they would have to come back for the board for really.
Right.
Similar the colors you're testifying to. We've seen some storage units with pretty, uh, robust colors. I'll put it politely.
Yes.
You really therefore can't testify to a color that, are you, are you suggesting you will pick the color scheme for your op, all your operators?
Well, the operators have their own colors, right? So Cube Smart, I call it a bold red. Public storage, they call it an iconic orange.
Yeah.
Okay, and extra space, I call it a vibrant green. So, um, those are, those are the color brands.
So the, so you really can't, the information we've been provided is speculative then until.
Then, and a lot of clients we work for, um, that's, that's kind of the process that you go through. Um, because at this stage in the process, you haven't, you haven't contained an operator yet. Sort of hardship that goes back and forth a little bit. So until you really sign that operator, you don't know exactly. We're familiar with all of their design criteria. And that's why when we design one of these things, we try to accommodate it. So any one of the, whether they picks, should be able to make one.
That's pertaining to the signage as well.
Correct.
And the name of facilities, same.
Well, we're calling it American self-storage right now, but once it, once it becomes branded, public storage speaks more naturally, so you can expect those things.
Clarification on the number of units. You said right now it's designed for nine hundred and sixty-one, but the number could go up or down. How much more could it go up?
It's a plus or minus five percent. But I, we have a track record where unit mix distribution we do are usually pretty well accepted. So our, our track record shows that it changes more. When those changes are made, it's simply, when it happens, when you go through the part of the building, firm of design process, and you get into the structural design. Sometimes after the other structural, you may have just do a couple of changes in the unit size, which is the structural designer. But I'm always confident in the unit mix that I've ordered, because now my hand is down.
Who has been testifying respectively.
He has been cast among respect to the. One way to address that problem is to reduce the size of the building. So I'm wondering. Is there a great point to have each? Building would be reduced so much.
I don't, I don't think we're prepared to answer that question tonight. But we're listening to what the board has to say. And I'd like to be able to answer that at another time.
How many of the units are gonna be climate controlled?
All the units on the inside are climate controlled, except for the exterior access driver.
Good, and kind of going along with that, what provisions are gonna be in place to prevent people from sleeping in those units?
That's always a good question, it generally comes up, so uh, part of the security is that uh, controls are done by the operators in the morning and the afternoon. Any, any storage units that um, are not occupied are typically locked in place upward. Uh, and with all the security cameras in place, you'll, you'll know right off the bat, you know, someone's occupying that.
Okay.
I'm not looking for a problem, but there's a lot of kids gotta go, be in that parking lot. A- a- anything additional that you would suggest that needs to be done from the security standpoint? Not expecting a problem, I'm just thinking, there, you know, there's a lot of kids in close proximity to it, there's.
There's some things we're discussing, we're discussing about how we probably better secure some of all of the facility in that now.
A, a question, so the units that have the outdoor, the first level outdoor roll-ups. So you're. You're suggesting a car or small truck, or even maybe a small moving van would move up, uh, pull in. And park parallel in front of the door as opposed to perpendicular to try to directly. Offload or utilize a ramp in the small U-Haul, is that, I mean, I. When, when my daughter ran, used, rented one of those, and we had the small U-Haul with the little ramp that went down, and we pulled the ramp out and went.
Yeah.
Perpendicular to be able to get in and out, which could block the drive aisles.
I mean, that's typically how it's done, and you know, when you sign up and have a lease agreement, you're working with the operators, the cameras on it. You know, they give out not only lease agreements, that you know, they have customer tips and guidelines and so forth, that are highly encouraged. And um, you know, so. Doesn't happen often, but if it does, they're usually challenged to correct the problem.
Yeah, cause a thirty-foot drive aisle with a eighteen truck foot, twenty, twenty-five foot truck with a six-foot bed that comes out, you effectively block.
Again, these are all good questions, and that's one of the reasons why, uh, considering using the major operators, yeah, those operators know, right, the standards nationally. Uh, they're constantly working together to make sure that these type of situations don't. Or get resolved or.
Okay, anyone else have a question on the board? No, then I'll throw it out to the public, either here in the room, tell, there's still nobody online, right, so, I won't throw it back to that. There being no questions. To Mr. Bulger, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Call Mr. Petrillo forward.
Servio, state your name for the record and raise your right hand.
Harry Petrillo.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in connection with your testimony tonight, either by affirmation or swearing to God.
I do.
You're sworn.
Thank you.
Mr. Petrillo, can you please give the board the benefit of your qualifications?
Sure. Bachelor of Architecture. Registered in New Jersey uh, in nineteen ninety-three. Since then, I'm registered in twenty-five additional states, been for numerous boards in the state of New Jersey, Pennsylvania, Massachusetts. New York. We've done multiple, uh, as both mentioned, multiple self-storage facilities.
Hi, I offer. Where'd you, where'd you go to school?
Roger Williams, in Rhode Island.
Thank you. I offer him as the next, yes, thank you, acceptable. So, um, Mr. Petrillo, you have an exhibit that you've marked there, or that we've put there that the board has not seen. And if you could please identify that, we provided digital copies to the board secretary in advance.
So we have uh, two regular enough, uh, effective views of the river sound. River West.
Let's mark the River Road South one as a four. And the River Road West one as a five. And why don't you take the board through what the proposed architecture is for this facility?
Sure. So as discussed, uh, this building uh, has a footprint of a hundred and eighty-two by two hundred and thirty-two. Feet, uh, giving us roughly forty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-four square foot footprint. Uh, each floor is the same, giving us a total gross area of a hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-two square feet. Uh, building is comprised of three stories, all above grade, the basement. Rent entrances on the. I call it River Road and Old River Road, since that seems to be the designation everybody's going by tonight. Interior unit access, uh. All climate control, uh, exterior, exterior access units on the sides of the building. Uh, a total of forty-five of those, uh, which are the drive-up minutes. As Mr. Bulger kind of listed, this is really a state-of-the-art building for self-storage. It's fully sprinkler, uh, per-coat, uh, lighting, all LED. The operators that are being discussed here, uh, their programs and their platforms are all really um. Top-notch and state-of-the-art. Our building height, at the highest point of our roof is thirty-five, six. Uh, high point of our parapet is thirty-seven, four, that roof pitches um. From thirty-five, six to thirty-three, four at the outer edge, uh, which gives us roughly a. Two-foot, three-foot um, parapet around the building to screen on the cap leaves, that would be on. The building consists of um. Intensely colored architectural block at the base, um, and there were considerations, I know somebody asked a question, yes, chairman asked a question about. Kids and being around buildings and all that, and I think that's important because you've got a bunch of kids here with baseballs and dumb balls and so on and so forth, so. That whole base, so. Understand, some, some abuse and. Um, the rest of the building vertically is an insulated metal, uh, insulated aluminum, aluminum metal panel. It's actually a really great product, um, it's clean, um, and the nice part about it, it has a great organization. So it is a good product out there, um, the rest of the building consists of uh, steel for glass, um, at the rear and front entrances. We've got a window display area at the rear entrance point, um, above that on the second, third floor. With some canopy, canopies, um, as mentioned, we also have uh, the internal loading docks. On those loading docks will be a um, overhead door that comes down. So it's visually, you can see in there, um, so if anybody was in there, that got in there, or got out in there, it's visual. That would be um. Key-coded also, so after hours, um, that would be on a key code, you got there after six PM or eleven lines, you can keep moving. During the day, during office hours, it's looking up, so people can describe anything, so.
Just to clarify, what was testimony before was if it was after hours, then the access code would not work.
When I say after hours, I, I'm talking about after offices close. Beyond that, after building out or operational hours, yes.
It would not work, okay, just wanted to clarify, thank you.
No problem, um, uh, we have a cornice up top, uh, that kind of caps the building, so the building basically has a strong base, midsection and a cornice. Mr. Bulger mentioned, you know, the earth tone colors, and basically the ability to brand it a little bit with some. Of that brand color that may, that an operator may want, and our intent was that, that branding would happen possibly in these areas here. Where you have the band up top and let the rest of the building just stay as an earth tone color.
Can you reflect that again, or in terms of the ban, branding?
So the branding color would occur where we're showing this darker pattern at the top here. And then possibly at the cabin level, um. And. Possibly at the rear door, rear elevation where we have the glass, um, those roll-up doors internal. Might show that color or that rain color through.
But the, the remainder of the structure would be in the neutral colors that we're proposing.
Meant to be in an earth tone, um, the majority of the, just to highlight it, like bringing that rain. The overhead doors are in turn, in, intended to stay as a neutral color on the outside. Again, just to kind of blend in with that earth toned face of the building. That pretty much covers the building as a whole, um, internally. Um, we've got on, on the diagonal opposite corners of the building are stairwells or degress on the building. Um, there's two elevators, one towards the front, one towards the rear access. And Mr. Bulger mentioned, that's really to facilitate the customers so that. Depending on where their unit is, once they're there the first time, they'll know better where to park, so they have a shorter run to get to their unit. Another point that wasn't mentioned with, from a security point of view, also, if you are a unit, uh. V C, V C store, um, and you have a unit on the second or third floor, typically your code for the elevator, you can only get to that floor. And then generally, the stairwells, it's almost like a hotel when you're coming down, and you can't access the other floors, you can only get outside of the space. Restrooms are generally at the office area on the first floor, so they can be monitored and seen, um, and controlled. So everything is really controlled throughout the building, so how customers come.
Um, there's an area that um. There's a glass area and a glass lobby that's open to the upper levels.
Yes.
Um, there, a question has been raised as to whether any signage or displays in these areas. Uh, to advertise for boxes and other packing supplies would take place.
No, there's no intent for any um, signage or advertisement. As I mentioned, the only thing that may happen there from a branding point of view is those overhead doors that are set in across the aisle. From that glass or that penetration may be a problem. That would be more. The tent.
Can you provide testimony regarding the length with and height of the two proposed loading spaces?
Loading spaces, I believe it was testified to, of the twelve feet wide, I believe of thirty-five feet. Um, height-wise, generally we'll put a fourteen-foot roll-up drill on those. Most trucks, road, roadworthy trucks are thirteen-six by, by grid standard, so. You can get a small, cute truck.
That's all I have, solar panels on the roof, did I see that that's a possible plan for that?
It's being contemplated, um. Usually what we will do is when we design the building structures, we'll compensate for that. So that they can put pounds on at some point in time if they wish, so the design load can handle the additional.
But it's not part of this app, it's not part of it, okay.
So the, for New Jersey, warehouse and all, for the solar, forty percent roof ready, that doesn't apply to this, it's.
I'm good, and any other board members have questions?
There's a multitude of pieces to that puzzle, um, with regard to requirements and size, it really. Is speculative. Grand scale right now, until the fire protection of the spring. We won't know what flow requirement is for that system, which will then drive the tank size. But then what also drives the tank size is the well, and what the recovery time is on the tank. So that if the tank, if, if, Dr. Bid, there was a fire in the building and it was drawing down, there's a rate of recovery that that tank has to. Refill by, and we won't know that until we do a lot of flow tests, things of that nature.
And then, in terms of the color?
In terms of the color, there's, basically, it can be any color, uh, and there's a lot of options with regard to, either it's cylindrical. In, in a tower form, at the silo that was mentioned, or it could be more of a tower element, where it's a raised water tower above the grade. Sitting on sort of a post-leg system, um, so there's a multitude of options.
But in, in terms of color, are there ways to make it less of? So to address the concerns, I, you don't have a neon green water tower.
If, if we're gonna paint evergreens around, I mean, paint evergreens around it, you could do a background, you know. So there's, there's ways of, of creating a screen for that, um, it's just, it's, it's really early to kind of give you any idea of. What the size of that tank will, what the dimensions of that tank are. It, it'll need to be developed as we're doing our actual building design.
I, I think if, I think if you get an approval and it turns out you need to do that, you'll have to come back to the board.
Or work with.
I think, I'm hearing the mayor, you need to come back to the board, so we can prove that.
And, and have that conversation.
Yeah, and hopefully you won't need it.
Right. Ideally.
What's that? There you go.
Dimensional. Question, uh, all in the mechanicals will be on the roof then?
Yes.
Okay, and so no electrical boxes, condensers, anything like that outside?
Probably have on the ground, ground mounted around the building, so there's a transformer, I think.
Where's over here, just for the record? The reporter described where.
Sorry, um, so basically, it's in a large, uh, green island between the main drive aisle of, of the building. And then first, uh, parking drive aisle.
Northeast corner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I had, I had two questions if I could, and the first one, I probably missed my chance, and maybe Mr. Bulger can answer it, I'll, I'll get back to that. But what are the proposals, if any, for lighting the building mounted signs?
My understanding, they're going to be internally.
And and the question that you may be able to answer it, but after Mr. Baldur's, are the restriction restrictions on the type of materials that can be stored in the building?
Yes, generally that's in the lease agreements.
And and what kind of restrictions are they?
So it's common to have lease agreements that restrict all types of, I'm going to say hazardous or dangerous types of objects.
Okay.
Firearms, bullets, gas.
Yeah, we can we can make a list. You know, heated it. We can we can provide an excerpt from that, but it's it's exhausted.
But for example, you couldn't park a car in.
Well, you can put that in in a you can put that in the lease. If you didn't want cars parked in there. There are self storage facilities that do allow that.
Okay.
But that's not part of a standards agreement, but it can be incorporated.
Okay, I I I'm I'm not saying whether it should or should not be. I was just wondering.
So it's important to to understand that. Anybody who's sort of far through this strength on that isn't really going to want to put power. So you can't order charge or anything like that.
Thank you.
Well, the vice chair just raised the question, you know, these electric bikes with these batteries that seem to be lighting up on fire around the world.
Well, I'd say. But I I think the comment was that there's no place to plug them in, so they won't be charging. And that's generally the problem with them when they're charging.
Yeah, in my opinion, for what it's worth, the color scheme that you're showing here is very nice for a big building with a lot of flat walls. To your point, Mr. Baldur, somebody comes in and, you know, decides to paint those beige panels all of bright orange because that's their color. This could turn out to be an ugly building in a big hurry.
That's not.
I I think that's why the testimony was the the large, the at the very top, the darker panels are what yeah, I heard that.
Branding colors as opposed to those lighter colored or the quarter coat or text. Where they.
Yeah, that's smart.
Just kind of on that same path again, there are, and I don't know the company names, where part of their brighter color and then the corridors, the interior corridors are lit up. So all floors look lit and the orange and the branding. Yeah. So you're not considering one of those types of applicants because that substantially changes the look of the building.
So a lot of these operators are also their own developers. So they have two arms of the company. One of the arms that helps on their own, they go gas buses, everything they do. The other arm of the company just operates. They operate based on the facility that they're given. So in this case, they're an operator and they're going to operate the facility that they're given.
And and you did you did say that to address your comment that that condition would exist, but only at the back of the building. But it's not the entire back of the building. What what? And that little strip is what? Because I don't think that's on our. It might be.
Approximately 21 feet wide, two floors.
Okay, thank you. You you are probably not the right person for me to ask this question of, but I'm I'm assuming that you can have commercial clients, Mr. Baldur, I'll pose it to you, commercial clients in there. And in the traffic study, it seemed to me that it assumed, and your numbers, you gave them, Mr. Baldur, these are, you know, residents who are you know, bringing stuff from their homes and bringing it in there. How do you stop this from being some commercial endeavor where you've got prime trucks pulling it out in and out of there 20 times a day?
I struggle with the term commercial because I try to always separate between resident and business. So I'm I'm in business for myself and I work from home. A lot of times I'll rent a self storage facility. To put my business items there rather than somebody who's selling things. Can't sell things out. So so that's that's good. So you can't have any type of commercial business like that. So not only is the lease agreement prohibiting prohibited items itself, but it also prohibits those type of uses.
Okay.
You can't operate a business out of that.
Because you see what I mean? And hey, no, not disparaging prime. They pulled up in front of my house lately. It seems like every day. But, you know, with with the traffic study, you could have prime trucks pulling in and out of there all day long.
But the proposal isn't for that type of.
Well, that's what I'm asking because it's not clear to me.
Proposal is for self storage use. And if there was a change in that use, proposed change in that use to a warehousing full use, if my mind, that would trigger the need for relief before a war.
That's what I didn't understand or wasn't clear to me. So that's why.
But I believe the testimony was residential homeowner and businesses. So.
Correct. But I think our term was commercial more towards the small business downtown or something like that. It doesn't have enough space to keep, you know, supplies for the season or something like that. They may use this.
Closed files for law firms.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a question for, I think, Mr. Baldur again. Is there any kind of retail aspect of this use typically? I think it was mentioned earlier, boxes or tape?
My forgiveness for not. Typically in the office, they will sell limited amount of items specific to self storage in a box. It's going to paint. You're going to have peanuts, bubbles, boxing. Supply. So it's really limited to just that.
To customers of that storage using one of the spaces within that facility?
Yeah.
Thank you.
If you have questions for Mr. Trillo, his testimony from the board, no, then I should throw it out to the public again. You do. Please step up to the microphone, sir. Take your time.
Name and name.
Name and address. Yeah, thank you.
John McKay, 122 Featherbed Lane, Wilmington, New Jersey. It's a nice building. Why do you have to put any other color on? I mean, if they're going to have signs saying it's Joe's Storage, why do they have to put a color on it? I mean, because it's a nice building. But once you start putting colors on it, it's not like Marion Township anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. What's your response to that?
You know, the simple act of that is the operators have the expectations buyers. accommodate those and it's branding and you want to try to identify who the actual operator is. We do this quite a bit and think we're doing a very, very reasonable approach by limiting the amount of color that we can put on there. It's kind of a little bit of a give and take. I think it's pretty reasonable. You can tell the operator said, you've got something here. It's not all those words. Except that, and we think it's reasonable from both aspects.
Yes, sir.
If it's your building, you tell them how you want. Same campus.
Well, you know, it's a condition of variances, you know, if you need variances, the board can impose various conditions of approval and that could be one. But it's it's not a permitted use per se. It's a usage requiring variance.
Sure.
Any other wire look like that?
Any other questions of?
Mr. Trillo, no, there were none and they were not from other than Mr. McKay. There was nothing from the public.
Great. So then I can call Mr. Plinia.
Now, we still have business to do. So so you have further with the board has further business tonight.
So you're saying no more witnesses?
I I think that's what the board says. But that's what you said. I don't say that. I asked him on his.
He almost went like this. Thank you for your time this evening. We're going to listen to what you said and we'd like to come back before the board. When can we have another hearing date? And we would ask that the.
You're going to do some soil testing, right? So how long is it going to take you to do that? Get the results and be in a position to come back?
With an updated stormwater management.
Because that that stormwater is important.
Second meeting in February? Our first meeting in February or second week?
The first meeting in February is Valentine's Day, the 14th, and then the second meeting is the 28th.
Yeah, mine is never too happy either.
I already I already moved around birthdays.
It's been four birthdays and Valentine stays out at night.
Just just to be clear, I want to go back to what Ms. DeJohn Domenico said before, because we do take the stormwater very seriously. And there's some testing that hasn't been done. Is that giving you enough time? Okay, because.
We Steve, we could always carry you and then that avoids you having to give further notice and advertisement. If you're not ready by that date, we could do a subsequent carry. You want you want to try for February 28?
Okay, but 10 days before the 14th, everything would have to be in. So that Friday the second, huh? I'm sorry. 21 days. So that.
I think you're really looking at the 28.
Okay, the 20th.
Avoiding Valentine's.
Okay, so the 28th, Steve?
Okay, so this is going to be carried until February 28th without the need for further notice or advertisement. And on some of the issues we raised tonight, Steve, I'll reach out to you with with Jeff and and Jessica and John Brill. Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
End of March.
Happy holiday.
Yes. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Thank you.
That was Chairman Geding's condition to our.
And Mr. Bellardo.
Oh, yes, yes.
We thought it was important. It is very important.
Now where? We're not related to the crime family down there. I get that question all the time. It's not us. That's 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 a different one. All right. If they're nice and I'm related to, but if it's a crime family, I'm not. Yeah, I had a dry cleaner that gave me very good service for years and I always wondered why. And then he finally asked me the same question when I told him, no, the service dropped.
Thank you. Okay, let's move through the agenda. The remaining items, there is no correspondence that I'm aware of. Taylor, am I right on that?
Correct.
Okay, Jeff, we're good, right? Discussions and recommendations. We do have a document that we just received, mending the township's regulation of stormwater and compliance with NJDEP requirements. Master plan consists.
Yeah, so this is, we're required to give a report back to the planning board that that this is not inconsistent with the master plan if we make such a finding and any other recommendations that we would care to include in that report.
I can give you the short version of what this does. It really does two things. Number one is incorporates the latest DEP standards for stormwater design, which includes both the current design storms in the year 2100 design storms. So the much larger storms you have to look at for major development. And it's applicable under the rule that was adopted by the DEP was applicable to residential projects immediately on July 17th. This brings it into non residential projects going forward. And the recommendation I gave to the governing body was to adopt the simplified version. So you don't need to adopt every chart and line and word in the DEP standard. So when they change one line, you don't have to change your ordinance. So that's why it's a simplified version. And the other aspect of this that is that is important, in my opinion, is it adds a classification of development called minor development and creates a more definitive standard for what that means and how it gets done. It's kind of been done. Yeah, you should do it in the past. And now we have a very specific standards for that because the major development only talks about areas of disturbance in excess of an acre and impervious surfaces greater than a quarter of an acre. And obviously, we need to regulate more than that. So that's the nuts and bolts of what this order does.
Be your opinion or Jeff's opinion that this is not inconsistent with our present master plan?
That is absolutely my opinion.
Okay.
There's only one factor. There's no correlation to an actual permit or regulations. So five years zoning permit requires thousand square feet or more. It says that it's required, but there is no linkage of
So why don't we? Why don't we do this? If we're going to make a motion to find this not inconsistent with the master plan, why don't we also indicate that part of the report should be what Jeff has just recommended and Jeff can work with Taylor to put that in the report. Would that would that be good, Mr. Vaccarello?
That's a great idea. And who produced this document? Did you, Jeff?
I I I I did.
I just want to point out a couple typos. Okay, so.
Then Jeff did it.
Just read it again. Land use board. It's late. Land use board is referred to.
I would think this is probably a form template.
Yes, and and that's intended to apply to say to say land use board versus planning board and zoning board.
Okay, well, then that's fine. And it also says borough engineer when out of borough or township.
Right, that is an absolute typo. Okay.
Okay.
Good. Was there a motion to find that this particular ordinance is not inconsistent with the master plan? And Mr. Vaccarello will assist our board secretary in submitting a report and recommendation as so noted to the government body.
So moved. Go ahead, go.
So moves.
Second.
Chairman, Mr. Oh, wait, do we do a recall?
Yes.
Chairman, Mr. Edward Geding?
Yes.
Vice Chairwoman, Ms. Donna Drew?
Yes.
Mayor, Ms. Robin Fatu?
Yes.
Mr. Scott McCain?
Yes.
Ms. Judy DeJohn Domenico?
Yes.
Mr. Dennis Concanon?
Yes.
Mr. James Miller?
Yes.
So when is second reading?
Next.
They would have to do it by the end of the year.
Next week.
Next week. Okay, so we need, as of the effective date of the ordinance, we need a list of who's
Not complete.
Not complete? Deemed complete because then they have to comply, correct?
Yeah, any residential project already would have to comply, but any non residential project that is not complete by the.
Deemed complete. So there's.
By way of historical background, and it is getting late, they used to have something called the time of decision. They used to have something called the time of decision rule, which, which meant that an applicant could be before a board for 14 or 15 hearings, and the governing body could adopt an ordinance, and the applicant would be subject to the ordinance, even though it had been there for a year and a half. Well, developers didn't think very highly of that, so they lobbied the legislature. So now we have something called, you know, time of the application, which essentially means if you deemed complete, then you, and an ordinance is passed afterwards, you're not subject to that. So that's, that's why some, somebody can beat the clock. But, but they have, they can't, you know, they can't argue that they're complete, you know, if they've got major glaring deficiencies. You can't say, oh, the North Arrow was left off sheet three. They, you had a couple of cases like that, and the court says, no, de minimis stuff like that, they're still.
But you can't put a cover page that says stormwater report on a phone book.
Right, 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 right. There was, there was all sorts of court battles when this was adopted.
Sounds like an actual.
Yeah, actually, the phone book is too thin for the new stormwater report.
I mean, you used to get some applications where all of a sudden the governing body would say, after many, many hearings, it's not a permitted use anymore.
Yeah.
And then they would say, ah, don't come before the planning board, go to the Board of Adjustments.
But that's where I just uncover our selves. We need to know who's complete, who's not complete. You know, at least there's a, so it's established within the township planning offices, so we have a clear. Because there's always stuff in the works.
Okay. In terms of my comments, thank you, everybody, for all your time and hard work and efforts throughout the year. Everybody have happy holidays, be safe. This is our last meeting of the year, we will not be meeting on the 27th, and we will actually not have that week's meeting on our schedule for 2024. So we'll address that on the view. Thank you, everybody.
I do, where is, where are we at with the commercial land use updates? Because the committee is eager to sign off on the proposed updated version.
We had our final meeting.
Meeting.
Final meeting, and Jessica gave us a final document two weeks ago.
So, so what happens with it then, if it's done?
It would be.
Gets referred to the committee.
Yeah.
Right, we, we all.
Yeah, it might be good if we did a, like a presentation and had Jessica there, and kind of we could talk through what the, because there was, there's still some things that we want to get in with landscaping. So Jessica did a lot of it, we were doing a lot of updates to clean up some of the landscaping stuff, but it's.
Prior to the government.
No, I mean, we could, we could keep working on that. But at the last meeting, we discussed some new things from John.
Who's going to get it on the agenda?
So.
Whose hand is it in? Who's leading the ship here?
I think there's a few things that Jessica just needs to revise, and then it would just go to Karen.
I'll call Jessica tomorrow to make sure, and I'll cover that with her, and then I can give Karen a call.
Yeah, let's keep it moving, because we're eager, knowing that we have a long line of.
Thank you for raising that.
Projects, so, and I know that was a labor of love, so thank you for all the.
It was numerous meetings and a lot of input from some very talented people.
Yeah, I know, we really appreciate it.
A lot of questions.
It'd be interesting, so.
Maybe I will share one, one of the things that's in it that's pretty cutting edge, not to, but the issue of accessory units.
Yeah.
And how, you know, in, in, in the interest of making our community one where people can age in place easier, and to do accessory dwelling units in residential areas. So that's one of the proposals. Yep.
Something that interested you, Mr. Miller, right?
Yeah.
Which actually just got approved, good.
So, you know, so that.
In the process, what they do is, after they get all the testimony, and every board member can make comments. I sat in on that meeting because of the largest complication.
Yeah.
Everybody who voted, who, the present definition is antiquated.
Right. Yeah.
Do the best we can to preserve the most precious resource for that, which is. So the Board of Adjustment totally.
Oh, yeah, well, the Board, Board of Adjustment Chair and Vice Chair were part of this subcommittee, so we.
Yeah, and, and they continue to restrain with exhaustive.
Yeah, and so, and that's where.
For solutions on relief of why they have so many applications.
Yeah, so things like corner properties and two side yards, why we can say one's a primary and one's a secondary, and you don't have setback variances all the time.
We're the governing body represented here who can pass the legislation suggested, et cetera, but we don't know what laws need to be developed or shaped without your guidance and suggestions. So we'll continue to look for that, because that's going to help us be more aggressive to eat the nature and character of our township, what we want it to be. Thank you.
Any other board comments this evening? No? Engineers' comments, Paul, thank you for all your efforts. Planners' comments? No? Thank you for. Attorneys' comments, I think you made them, but go ahead if you had some.
The only comment I have is I need to talk to Paul about a lot of ordinance, coverage ordinance in Baton Rouge, so hang out for a few minutes. I need some background on that one.
Well, thanks again, everybody.
Yeah.
Thank you.
See y'all next year.